That's great.
Meeting call to order, please. Please join me in prayers. Dear God, today as this session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for directions which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessings on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Please join me in the allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencouraged, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counsel Robinson.
Here.
Counsel Roach.
Here.
Counsel Scott.
Here.
Counsel Yehm.
Here.
Mayor Chow.
Here.
Counsel Drinkwater.
Here.
Counsel Gitchia.
Here.
Counsel Janess.
Here.
Counsel Leahy.
Here.
Counsel Mercier.
Here.
Counsel Noon.
Here.
Eleven present.
We now shall begin the meeting with the memorials. Counsel Leahy.
Thank you. I'd like to have a moment of silence for George Simon. George C. Simon, sixty-two, of Chelmsford, formerly of Lowell, passed away Wednesday, August thirty-first, after a long courageous battle with cancer. He was the beloved son of the late John Simon, Senior, and the late Janice Cox Simon. Born March tenth, nineteen sixty, in Lowell. He was raised and educated in Lowell, attending the Maury School, Daly Junior High, graduated from Lowell High School. He was a proud Highlands boy, growing up on Stevens Street, playing baseball at Calery Park, and then went on to play youth football. He loved spending time, especially with his family, during on the holidays, poolside and at the beach. He was also known to cook turkey dinners for the elderly who were alone on the holidays. George enjoyed cooking, especially organic dishes, and he just loved to cook for everybody. He also loved the horse races with his close friends. George will be remembered by all who had the pleasure of knowing him as a family man or friend, as a good Samaritan. He was always there to help anyone in need. In fact, he was a hero in his own right. George compromised his own personal safety to save the life of an elderly man being assaulted, putting his own life in danger. George worked at Raytheon for over thirty-five years. He's survived by his siblings Deborah Simon Elliott, her husband Richard, Mary Ellen DeSantis, and her husband Foytis, her brother John J. Simon of Haverhill, Eric Simon, and many nieces and nephews and cousins. He'll be sadly missed. Thank you.
Counsel Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to offer a moment of silence in Docking Chamber for Queen Elizabeth, the Queen of the United Kingdom, from February sixth, nineteen fifty-two, to her death last Thursday on September eighth, twenty twenty-two. Her reign of seventy years and two hundred and fourteen days was the longest of any British monarch. Queen Elizabeth was the wife of the late Prince Philip Mountbatten for seventy-three years until his death in April of twenty twenty-one. Queen Elizabeth the Second maintained a special relationship with the United States. She loved America. There was no closer ally to the United States than the Queen herself, and there was so much respect from her. After the September second terror attack, I mean, I'm sorry, September eleventh terror attack, the Queen honored that the Star Spangled Banner be played outside of Buckingham Palace as a way to show solidarity with Americans, and that's why I present this moment of silence for her here as well. I had the privilege and honor to see her when she came to Boston in nineteen seventy-six. I shimmered up a light pole to get a better view. I could not do that today, but I did it then. I couldn't do that now. The city of Lowell was honored to host the visit of Prince Charles and now King Charles the Third on September second, nineteen eighty-six, when Bobby Kennedy was the mayor. Prince Charles was accompanied to Lowell by former Governor Michael Dukakis to tour Wang headquarters with Dr. Ann Wang. Prince Charles also greeted a gathering of people at Market Mills and shook my son David's hand. So the Queen and her sons showed an interest closest to home here, and we all appreciate that. Queen Elizabeth the Second leaves behind her four children, now King Charles the Third, Princess Anne, Prince Andrew, and Prince Edward, her eight grandchildren, and her twelve great-grandchildren. She will be truly missed by not only the people of the United Kingdom, but also by our American people as well. And I'd also like to offer a moment of silence in Docking Chamber to all those who passed away since our last city council meeting. May they all rest in peace. Thank you.
Counsel Leahy.
Thank you. I just also wanted to offer our condolences for the Queen. In my term last year as mayor, I was visited by some of the British consulate from Boston, Dr. Peter Abbott, Her Majesty's Counsel General, Ben Burgley, Senior Trade Advisor, and Paolo Di Fabio, head of the press and politics. So it's connection here we have in Lowell, and we offer our condolences. Thank you.
Any other counselors? Thank you both counselors for including the Queen of England in the moment of silence. I too would like to extend my condolences to the royal family, and we do have a great relationship with England, with the United States. Our history ties. Mr. Clerk, please dim the light for the moment of silence. I want to welcome everyone to the chamber to spend an exciting day. We have a lot going on through that city hall, and I also want to welcome Newse Media Group in the gallery. They are an international media company and visiting us today to get to know the city of Lowell better. Thank you for being here. We now go. We now continue with the mayor's business. Two point one, communication, remote Zoom participation, motion to accept and place on file by Counsel Drinkwater, second by Counsel Janess. The motion is passed. We have a couple citations, and I think maybe a round of applause for Fortune and Sweet Bar might be better than reading just the citation. Please give a hand of applause to Fortune and Sweet for being here. They graciously gave out over two hundred scoops of ice cream this afternoon hallway to the employees and the guests today, so thank you so much. I do have a citation for you. Would you like me to read it to you tonight? Or I know that we have a opening ribbon cutting for you in the weekend also, right? So please come to the podium and just quickly read the citation.
I'm Jason Vitari. Hello?
Yes.
I'm Jason Vitari.
Yes.
And I'm Hannah Lutz.
Okay, I'm gonna just quickly to recognize you real quick, and then I'm gonna just have you say a few words about your business, okay? So this is the Fortune and Flame Sweet Bar, and the owners are Hannah Lutz and Jason Vitari. And the city of Lowell, we, as you know, we support our small businesses throughout the city. We're very thankful for you making investment in our city, and we look forward to the ribbon cutting at your business pretty soon. Can you tell us where you're located and what are your specialty?
Absolutely. So we are located at five hundred Pawtucket Street in Lowell. It's the site of the old Burbex, which most of you are familiar with, and we opened about a month and a half ago, but we're excited for our grand opening this Saturday. Please join us. We'll have live music, food, and of course, ice cream, which is our specialty. We do hard-scooped ice cream, but we particularly specialize in allergy-friendly options. We have a child with some allergies, so that is really important to us, and we have a variety of options that most people can find something that they can eat.
Anything to add, Jason?
She said it all. I can't wait to see everybody on the seventeenth.
And it's located at Old Burbex Ice Cream.
It is.
Next to my old alma mater, the Paulette School. So we look forward to seeing you at the grand opening.
Thank you very much. We look forward to it.
And I do have another citation, which not only myself, but the council body and the entire administration is very proud of Andre Gonzalez for all the work that you do. Andre Gonzalez, please step to the podium, please. And Andre, you also fit into the category of unsung hero, and I'm gonna read the citation to you because there should be more that should be in here, but I will do my best to capture some of the work behind the scene that you've done with the Health Department. Official citation, be it hereby known to all that the city of Lowell, in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to Andre Gonzalez, Syringe Collection Program Coordinator. The city of Lowell's Syringe Collection Program was developed in response to the significant public health and safety risk posed by improper disposal of syringes, and to enhance public awareness of the importance of proper handling of sharps. Since joining the city of Lowell as Syringe Collection Program Coordinator in April two thousand nineteen, Andre Gonzalez has demonstrated remarkable degrees tenacity, community spirit, and goodwill in responding to these challenges. His unmatched work ethic has enabled the program to exceed all expectations in its first three years and to have a profound impact on the city and the well-being of its residents. Through the cumulative product of countless proactive sweeps of areas prone to improper needle disposal and responding to needle collections requests across the community, Mr. Gonzalez collected his fiftieth thousandth, fifty-thousandth, I can't even say that number, fiftieth-thousandth, so, needle in September twenty twenty-two, a milestone that reflects the importance of his tireless work on behalf of the city. Beyond his daily needle collection efforts, Mr. Gonzalez prioritized outreach and education through the dissemination of information related to proper needle disposal and frequent presentations at schools and community meetings. He is truly an indispensable employee and member of the Lowell community. Now therefore, I, Master Kai Chow, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby best offer our best wishes to you for your selfless community service, given this thirteenth day of September twenty twenty-two, signed by myself and the entire city council. Thank you. It's an amazing achievement. Before I turn the microphone to you, does any member of the council would like to say anything? Counsel Robinson?
Thank you. Something a lot of people might not know, I've known Andre for twenty-five years. I mean, many years ago, we did music together. Andre was living in Lawrence at the time. Even back then, I was twenty-one years old, twenty years old. He was all about community back then. I remember I was the union president years later. We were fighting to try to establish something with the city for syringe collection because we realized there was a problem. I remember Andre said, "I signed for a job." They created a, you know, specialist that was gonna deal with this. I thought he was crazy, a one-man show coming into the fourth largest city in the state, and he was gonna address that issue, and here we are, fifty thousand syringes later, a one-man army, but he's branched out and educated many, and he's more responsive than a team of ten guys could be, I think, and so thank you very much for all the hard work.
Thank you. Counsel Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm very honored to say, Andre, you did a tremendous job. I'm so proud of you. I can attest for the fact that he picked up, I think, forty-nine thousand across the street from where I work, so you did a tremendous job. We're very, very proud of you. Thank you for your hard work, and thank you for providing safety for our citizens. Thank you.
Andre, would you like to say a few words?
I've accomplished a lot of things in my life, but this wasn't actually on the bucket list of it. But I'll take it. You know, I just personally feel that the impact that this program has had, it's had a profound impact. It's enhanced many departments across the board in the city. It's enhanced the quality of life for the citizens and children of the city, which is my main driving goal, is to make sure people are safe. It's become the eyes and ears of many departments as well, and it's something that I took personal, like I do anything that I do. One quote just comes to mind when I just think about taking this job and getting up every day to try to make a difference in the city is, it's like finding a needle in a haystack. I wake up every day and I try to find that needle in the haystack, so thank you for allowing me the opportunity, and God bless Lowell.
Thank you, Andre. For the two citations, need a motion to accept and place on file by Counsel Janess, second by Counsel Leahy. The motion is passed. We have some time before the seven o'clock public hearing. We now go to the presentation, two point three, and it's really my honor to welcome Mr. Peter Lally. Is he here yet? Okay, it's right there. I thought I saw you earlier. And he's gonna speak a little bit about the Lowell Memorial Auditorium, one-hundred-year anniversary, very, very exciting. It's great to have the auditorium in our city. Mr. Lally?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to the council for allowing me to speak tonight. With me tonight is John Shemley, who's a partner of mine in Lowell Management Group, as well as Jim O'Donnell, who's the chairman of the Board of the Auditorium Trustees. In September twenty-first, nineteen twenty-one, then Vice President Calvin Coolidge oversaw the opening and dedication of Lowell Auditorium, and just like that, here we are, a hundred years later. So he was to be president just a month later, and the auditorium was really a success right from the beginning. It was funded with a million dollars of federal funds to be built and opened in nineteen twenty-two. It was very busy throughout the twenties and thirties. In the forties, the Golden Gloves started. We're gonna be having the seventy-sixth year of the Golden Gloves Boxing Series starting in January of twenty twenty-three. That started in nineteen forty-six at the auditorium. We only skipped one year, and you can guess which one that was. We then, through the fifties and sixties, the auditorium was still kept pretty busy. Around the seventies, it was a really critical decision was made to modernize the auditorium, and the city really made a bold step at that time, along with Paul Songus, to seek some funding to renovate and revitalize and modernize the auditorium, so it could be hosting Broadway shows and other things that just weren't technically thought about in the nineteen twenties when it was being built. And that was a huge step forward for the auditorium. It really was a shot in the arm, not only for the auditorium, but for the city, and I think that looking back over those decades since that decision was made, I think it was really a key decision at the time in looking to Lowell as in the downtown area as a destination. You know, it was the first thing that happened before things like the ballpark and the Western Ave Studios and the arena and so forth, and I think that success with the renovation of the auditorium in the eighties really emboldened the city to do more things and to reinvest in that idea of being a destination city. Of the last few decades, it's the Broadway series has been successful, concerts in the nineties, James Taylor, Bruce Springsteen, on and on. It's been such an anchor of downtown, and we're really excited about the hundredth anniversary. We kicked things off for the centennial season last Thursday with John Fogerty, a sold-out show. We've got some celebrations throughout this month into the fall and even into early twenty-three as we celebrate the twenty-two, twenty-three centennial season of the auditorium. So I'd like to extend an invitation to the council and to everybody listening to come to the auditorium on Wednesday, September twenty-first, at four o'clock. We're gonna have a birthday party, for lack of a better term, and rededicating the auditorium. It was built as a memorial to the veterans. It included memorials up through World War One. Other engagements have been added, and memorials have been added throughout the decades to recognize those that have served through since it was opened. So we'll have Dick Howe from the Greater Lowell Veterans. He's the historian of the Greater Lowell Veterans. He'll be speaking, as well as Mr. O'Donnell and Mr. Mayor, so we invite you all to come down for four o'clock for those speaking engagements, as well as some, a little bit of a party afterwards. We're gonna have some music and hors d'oeuvres and... and even a birthday cake, so, we're very, very excited, and I'd like to really thank the city and the council for supporting the auditorium, we've got some initiatives coming up that have been made possible through the city and the state partnering on some funding, as you can imagine, 100-year-old building has some constant needs, and it's great that the city has invested the time and energy to be able to help us keep up with that, and also for the support of the city throughout the difficulties we've seen in the live events business in the last couple of years. It goes without saying, it's been a rocky road, and we would be celebrating and having such a great kickoff in a sold-out event the other night to celebrate the beginning of the 100th if it wasn't for the support of the city, so, thank you so very much for that, and I hope to help you join us at 4:00 PM on the 21st. Thank you. And if I may, one last thing, if you didn't have a chance to see, there was a great piece that the Boston Globe did last Sunday on the auditorium, and I have PDF files of it, be happy to circulate, be happy to send it if anyone would like to read it, but they did a really nice piece on the entire history of the auditorium and of the city, so, thanks again.
Thank you, Mr. Lally, Mr. Shemley, Mr. O'Donnell, for all you do for the auditorium, and keep it going all these years, and be a great partnership with the city, thank you. Any other comments with any, from any councilors? Hearing none, we'll now go to the next presentation, the Kiwanis Club of Greater Lowell, use of the City Hall for Haunted House during Lowell High School construction, is somebody from Case who's here that to speak on this? Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members, my name is Maria Ernst, and I just wanted to take a few moments to speak about Monster Bash and kind of its history. It started with the Kiwanis of Greater Lowell, their vision was to create a community event where you would bring kids together, probably like 12 and under, you know, for having a safe Halloween, bringing together all sorts of businesses, organizations, where they can go trick-or-treating table to table, and playing games, and just having a fun Halloween celebration. And then a few years, and that was about maybe 20 years ago, and a few years after that was created, there was a partnership between, I guess, what's, I can't remember the name of it, but now the Office of Cultural Affairs and Special Events, who is doing the downtown Halloween stroll, partnered together, which now created the Monster Bash and Halloween Stroll that you now know even, you know, to this day. And I think what was more important was that when that was created, you created an event that was a positive community engagement between the families and businesses and organizations of Lowell, and you also created this, you know, wonderful event that kids will, you know, have lots of fun and, you know, good memories, and, you know, it's a safe, a safe place to be able to enjoy and celebrate Halloween. We had been staged at the Lowell High School for several years, and of course, with the renovations, there was a little concern as far as, you know, where we would be having our Monster Bash, you know, specifically our Haunted House, and we, when we were informed that City Hall would be, you know, inviting us, opening their doors for us to be able to have the Haunted House here, I mean, we were speechless. We, you know, we're beyond excited, but more importantly, to be able to enable us to continue this tradition that's been going on for over 20 years, and, you know, something that this community, you know, the city of Lowell, and, you know, families, businesses, and organizations, and kids just look forward to, it's become a tradition, so, we are very thankful for that, we appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you for that presentation, it's very exciting, and I look forward to it, and you're working very closely with Peter Cruden Case to make it scary for City Hall, so, Council Leahy?
That's great that we're using City Hall, and I'm sure the Clerk's Office, which is the scariest department, I'm sure they'll come through for us all.
Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll now go to another exciting event, not local, but it's on Calamata, Greece, Sister City delegation trip, and we have my friend, the former mayor, William Samaras, going to speak on the delegation trip.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and to you, the members of the Lowell City Council, for your support in this project. Just let me give you a quick history, during my administration as mayor, members of the Greek community worked with me to create a sister city in Greece, we chose as our city, Calamata, Greece. This was a chance for Greek-American, for the Greek-American community to come together to renew their ties with the country of our parents, our grandparents, and beyond. The sharing of culture, education, and dialogue that could create economic development. We were well on our way to completing this project when COVID stopped any chance of us coming together. If you recall, it looked like everything was lost, but with the hard work of many members of the Greek community, fundraising especially, and especially by Bill Kofkas and Demetrius Mathias, who will speak also tonight, we were able to renew the project. Also, I really want to thank Mayor Chow for during this project, for his tireless effort in making the members of the mayor's delegation from Calamata so welcomed. Also, I want to thank the City Council for your vote to renew the memorandum of understanding, that was really an important part of what we had to do. It's our hope as a group that we will be a model for the rest of the city for the creation of more sister cities, because Lowell certainly is a welcoming city, a city of all groups, a for-all groups. This allows all groups to hold on to their heritage, and it makes us a stronger city, a stronger country. We really believe in this project. Demetrius will tell you some of the things that happened with the mayor when he came here, and what we expect to receive when we go there. Also, I actually want to thank the city manager, because I believe he was being sworn in that day, and he gave of himself in his time to welcome the mayor, and the mayor said, it's not bad, I mean, he had an important day, and he's still had time for me. But we have going to this project is, excuse me, I'm not good in these phone things. Okay, we have Mayor Sakawi Chow of Lowell, Bill Kofkas, President of the Federation of Greek American Societies of New England, myself, former mayor of Lowell, Ed Kennedy, State Senator, who played an important role working with his equal that came to the city, Arlene Parquette, Vice Chancellor of the University of Mass at Lowell, Judith Hogan, Dean of Middlesex College, Demetrius Mathias, Board Member of the Federation of Greek American Societies of New England. So we're excited about what's going to happen, and we hope that this really leads to other communities being part of this process, but also hopes that we can bring our communities with the countries that we came from closer together to work towards a common cause for all people. I'd like to have Demetrius give you an outline of, they ran everybody, I'll tell you, they ran everybody ragged, they didn't give them time off.
Thank you, Mr. Samaras. Mr. Mayor, esteemed members of the council, I would like to thank you on behalf of the Federation, who allow us to be in the front of our great city. It is indeed a pleasure for me to be part of this organized event, which has made Lowell more known to, across the Atlantic, and especially Calamata. They are all delighted, they were all so happy to be here with us, and especially the royal treatment that we gave them while they were here, I cannot tell you how much happy I am as a citizen of this city. I hope that this collaboration, this sisterhood that took place under the guidance of our former mayor, Bill Samaras, will last, will have an everlasting event that will help both ends, the city of Lowell, our citizens, and the city of Calamata, and beyond. Last time, these people, the only thing they could tell us is that they did not have one minute to breathe while they were here, and incidentally, it was with the inauguration of our new manager, they were delighted to see how our system is working, our democracy is done in Americas. So, two weeks ago, I was in Calamata, and I was with the mayor again, and we spoke about all of these things, and they just can't wait to see us to make this thing happen. I pray to God that whatever we have planned, and especially on the educational part, because there is another end, is the tourist, touristic part, and also the business part that has been compiled to this sisterhood, this is not just a signature sisterhood, will be here for many years to help, and perhaps many others that they may want to be part of the sisterhood associations of Lowell, of the entire world. So, I hope the people involved, and pray, as I mentioned, will follow up step by step what we have done for this. And one more thing, this is a tribute to the memory of his parents, who like me, came here as an immigrant, and made Mr. Samaras the number-one citizen of the city. May his memory be eternal, thank you very much, thank you for everything.
Thank you both for coming to make that presentation, and just one comment on that, it was great welcoming the Calamata Mayor's delegation to the city of Lowell, which made it possible, was the support of the city managers, and the chief of the police that provided the escort service, and make sure that they would enjoy this day in Lowell. Thank you. So on those three presentations come to a completion, need a motion to accept and place on file by Councilor Yams, second by Councilor Rourke, on favor of the eye, opposed, no, the ayes have it, motion is carried. Thank you all. We're a little bit past 7 o'clock, and now we're going to take up the public hearing, so we're going to skip a few items, which we'll return, we now go to section, the section six and seven, which is the general public hearings. 6.1, ordinance, amend Chapter 20, subsection 58, case, this portion is now open to all those in favor, open to all those in favor, hearing none, that portion is closed, now open to all those who oppose, open to all those who oppose, hearing none, that portion is closed, any comment from any of the councilors? Hearing none, Mr. Clerk, roll call please. Need a motion to adopt by Councilor Scott, second by Council Robinson, Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Council Rourke?
Yes.
Council Scott?
Yes.
Council Yem?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Council Drinkwater?
Yes.
Council Getchia?
Yes.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Mercia?
Yes.
Council Nune?
Yes.
6.2, ordinance, create position, case, Assistant Director for Communications and Marketing, this portion is now open to all those in favor, open to this in favor. You're going to speak, Peter?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, I'm here to speak on behalf of the motion to create a new marketing communications specialist for the case office. We think this is a great opportunity for the city to really help us advocate for all the tremendous work the council is trying to do on behalf of moving the city's goals forward, and the position will also allow us to really help it and push Lowell out to the surrounding community, and help us represent Lowell to the rest of the state in terms of what it is, so we're looking forward to really capitalizing on this opportunity and working with all of you, thank you so much.
Anyone else to speak in favor? Hearing none, that portion is closed, now open to all those who are here to speak in opposed, opposition, now, open to all those opposed, that portion is now closed, any comment from the councilors? Council Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to the manager, I appreciate you bringing this forward. One thing that's come to me in many, many communications I've had with residents, businesses, city employees, is communication, 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 and I think this is an important step forward to improve the city's communication with all the stakeholders that we have. I look forward to seeing how this role is implemented and how this can benefit our city. I do want to make sure that this role is empowered to do everything they need to do, so if there's anything I can do to help with that, please bring that to me, I want to make sure that this role is appropriately resourced, is, you know, given the power to do the things they need to do, to list what's in the job description, but I don't think one person is going to be enough to satisfy all the communication needs within the city. So I look forward to see how much of a dent this one person can put in, and, you know, what might be next for improving our communication skills, so, once again, I thank you for bringing this forward, I think it's a good step forward, thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none, need a motion to adopt by Councilor Janess, second by Council Robinson, Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Council Rourke?
Yes.
Council Scott?
Yes.
Council Yem?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Council Drinkwater?
Yes.
Council Getchia?
Yes.
Council Janess?
Yes.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Mercia?
Yes.
Council Nune?
Yes.
11 ayes.
We now go to section seven, utility public hearing, 7.1, Boston Gas DPA National Grid requests installation of a gas regulator station on Chemsford Street at Baltimore Avenue, this section is now open to all those in favor.
Just a note, Mr. Mayor, there are representatives from National Grid on the Zoom connection, and they were to answer questions.
He's here just to answer, not speaking yet, correct?
If they want to speak, they can, if they're in favor.
Anybody else here to speak in favor? Hearing none, that portion is now closed, now open to all those who oppose, open to all those who oppose, hearing none, any comments or questions by the councilors? Hearing none, somebody, okay, are you here to speak on the opposition, or?
I'm in opposition.
Please state your name and your address, please.
My name is Lisa Baltisa, I'm, I live on Delmon Ave in South Lowell, and I don't know if this is in regards to my neighborhood, because I heard you say Chemsford Street, but, oh, can you hear me now? Okay, I'll catch you later.
So taking care of 7.1, any other comments, questions by the councilors? They're not need a motion to adopt by Council?
No, refer to one inspector.
Need a motion to refer to one inspector for report and recommendation by Council Mercia, second by Council Robinson, on favor of the eye, opposed, no, the ayes have it, motion is carried. Okay, we now go to 7.2, Boston Gas DPA National Grid requests installation of gas main replacement on Ammon, Jean, Crispin, and Delmon Avenues, as well as Burnier and Lowell Street, this portion is now open to all those in favor, open to all those in favor, hearing none, this portion is closed, now open to all those who oppose.
I'm not so much opposed, I have concerns, so, I received this letter, and it said that we were going to have plastic varying diameter gas mains. To me, plastic isn't as safe as maybe cast iron, or as strong, so I did some research, and I found out that plastic varying gas mains have a life expectancy of 11.4 years. Not only that, it's that they depend on the structure supporting them around them, and my area, but we have a lot of potholes, a lot of sinking of, you know, land beneath the pavement washing away. So, without the support of the dirt over time, those, again, will crack. And I'm just wondering why we're going through all of this work and not choosing to install cathode coated cast iron mains, and do it the right way, where it's going to last. I mean, we have cast iron mains now, and, yeah, they're supposedly, they're seeping, but when were they installed? They were installed in the 20s, in the 40s, they've been there for quite some time. And I think if we were to do them with cathode coated gas mains, that they would in turn last even that much length of time, if not more. So, I just don't see it as being, it may be easier to install, but I don't see them being long lasting and effective. Not only that, but they're being installed from, on plastic onto cast iron, because my home out input that's taking in gas is cast iron. So, you're joining plastic to cast iron at homes. And what I read about that is when there is damage to occur, and like wear and tear, it's to occur at that joint. So, I just don't think it's safe. I don't want to be in another Lawrence situation over time. I don't want to see my neighborhood blown up. I want to see it last for future generations.
Sure. Thank you. I'm going to have Mr. Clerk have the representative from National Grid make a response, but for the record, what is your name and address again?
My name is Lisa Baltazah. I live on 93 Delmon Ave. in South Lowell.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, is the representative from National Grid available to make a comment?
Yeah, there are several on, whoever wants, wishes to speak on it, may.
Hi, Diana Cuddy, National Grid Gas, 40 Sullivan Road, Wall fam, Massachusetts. I wanted you just to mention that the reason the company has gone to plastic is because you can do a long run of plastic. It's a high density plastic, and you don't have as many joints as you do with a cast iron, which where the leaks normally occur. So, there is less, they can run a long run, then they can melt the two pieces together in the longer run. So, we see less leaking. And it is a little bit more flexible for any kind of instance where there is some kind of unsettled earth, although the gas main is installed low enough in the ground, and it's, when it's installed, the backfill and compaction around it is a standard process that we use. So, it's supposed to be tucked in there nice and tight. And like I said, there is a little flexibility with the plastic that the cast iron and bare steel gas mains that we have existing do not have. And it would tip, quite often, when they do replace a main with the plastic, they will rerun the service to your location with plastic, so that it's all one continuous run.
Okay, so, are you going to monitor after time if it is leaking, or seeping, or cracking, like what you're replacing now is?
Yes. So, every three years, we do a walking survey of every inch of pipe. So, every three years, we've done the whole system for the walking survey. They also every year do a mobile survey. And I have to double check, but I think actually they do the downtowns every year as well. So, yes, it's always being inspected. They're really on top of that, and, yeah.
Okay. I'm still kind of opposed. I would just prefer cathode coated mains, and I'm wondering why you're not choosing to do that.
Because they leak, and we're prone to leaking, because there's, the sections of the pipe are shorter, you know, maybe four, six feet, and then you have a joint, there's a gasket, and then bolts and things like that that seal it. But the plastic, extruded plastic can go many more feet, and then it's mechanically, I mean, I'm sorry, it's not as mechanically connected to one another, the pieces. They're more uniform and continuous versus the mechanical connection of bolts and gaskets that connect the steel pipe together. So, it's less leak prone.
I tend to disagree, but, not from what I read, not from what I read. I mean, cast iron and cathode coated is more resistant to freezing, and to wear and tear, and to not being cracked when there's no earth supporting it. So, I don't know. I see it as a cost savings. I see it as a easy labor, because, you know, plastic versus cast iron, it's, you know, lighter, it's easier. I've read on that, too. It's labor and the cost savings in plastic that, you know, people tend to go that route. But, we've improved cast iron, and it's cathode coated now, and it's, it's going to last longer than plastic.
So, we do have cathodic protection on our bare steel and cast iron. We do have that now. We've had that for a while. But, anything new going in the ground?
It's cathode coated now. It's, excuse me, it's cathode coated. It's not just your average cast iron that they installed in the 20s. They've improved it, and I'm just wondering why it's not good enough to use in my neighborhood, and why we get plastic.
So, we do do cathodic protection on the bare steel now with sacrificial anodes that will actually, they deteriorate before the steel. So, we're constantly replacing them, which then again protects the steel and the cast iron. So, we do do that, but all the new gas main and services, anything new at National Grid now is the plastic.
Well, that's not necessarily what I read in the Maury Healy agreement document that I found online, that said that the cathode mains were being used in the more condensed city, more used public, you know, roads, neighborhoods, like the city of Lowell, like the city, not little suburb, outskirts neighborhoods. So...
If I could interject here real quick, maybe Mr. Manager might offer a little bit insight. Do you have something to provide, Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Man, through you, Ms. Baltazah. If you'd like, we can actually take this offline, and we can have this discussion further.
I just want to say a couple more things about this letter.
Oh, sure. I just want to make sure that we understand what's going on from the administration's side.
So, in regards to this letter, this was only written in English, and we have a very diverse community. And in my neighborhood as well, it has gotten more diverse over the years, and I'm glad to see that happening. But this was not written in anybody else's language, other than English. I talked to some Asian neighbors, and they did not know what this meant. So, they could not rely on it. Now, I knew I could get a petition, but I did not have enough time, because unfortunately, my husband came down with COVID, so I had to quarantine. I am negative, thank you. So, it's just, and we weren't told where it was being held. So, just didn't like that. I had to go and hunt down where it was being held, and make a couple of phone calls to find out, and, you know, I just feel like it should have been written in at least another couple of languages, Spanish, Asian.
I want to thank you for being here, and it sounds like you might want to get more information to be more comfortable with this. So, maybe we can refer this motion to the city manager's office, so that way, because Mr. Manager did offer to provide information, have a communication with the manager's office, and also with National Grid if need be. Mr. Clerk, there's no rush to, just for the city manager's office? Okay. One of us. So, we'll refer this to the city manager's office, and they'll be in communication with you, okay?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Machado will be out to talk to you in just a moment to get all the information. Thank you.
Okay, so we just need a motion from the council member by, to refer this to the manager's office. Motion from Councilor Scott, second by Councilor Robinson. On favor, the I oppose, say no, the I have it, motions carry.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to speak on the topic.
Councilor Getchia?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the rep from Boston Gas. We're doing a lot of roads in neighborhoods like this, and we're doing single trenches. Do we have an agreement that would work together with the city, and also Boston Gas, that would actually incorporate full paving of the roads that they're putting the trench in, so that maybe the city picked up 50% and Boston Gas picks up 50%? Because at the time, as we're ripping apart these roads in these neighborhoods, aesthetically, it looks awful. For passing by, we don't seem seal any of the trenches, and it seems like we're just going over and over, and we're making these neighborhoods a lot worse, and we're causing stress to the actual pavement when we're pulling it, because now we're allowing them to work from November 15th to April 15th. So, when they're pulling frost out of the ground, it's putting stress and heaves into the road that don't get repaired. So, through you to the Boston Gas representative, is there an agreement that maybe Boston Gas would pick up a portion of repaving a road that's in bad condition at the time of these trenches, and the city could pick up the same portion and use that contractor at the same time when they're grinding, and go to curb to curb to try to make some of these roads, or restore them back to somewhat what they were, because these trenches are completely awful that they're leaving. If you go up to Sanders, and you go in that area, they don't seem sealing, they do nothing to them, they just mill and throw a patch. And if you could ask the Boston Gas representative that question.
Sure. Mr. Clerk, is the National Grid rep still online to provide answers?
I believe so.
I am, yes, thank you. Yes. So, with regards to new mains, if that's usually a main extension to service a new customer, the customer pays for that. So, to do any road restoration would have to be paid for by the customer, which is certainly something, you know, in the permit that you request, they, we can go back to them and ask them if they're willing to pay for that. The problem with the main replacements is that the cost of the road restoration is part of the operation and maintenance of the main replacement, and that goes back to the ratepayers. And we're being, you know, very diligent about not increasing the rates by adding extra costs like that. However, if the patch, the trench patch is inadequate, you can definitely let me know about it, because most of these types of work are done by a contractor through National Grid that's supervised with one of our supervisors. And if they are installing inadequate trenches and not sealing them properly, you know, that's something that would go back to them to do properly. So, you can just let me know about that, and of course, supervisors as well, that work directly with them. But, I hope that answers your question.
I don't think it does. So, what I'm asking of Boston Gas is to come up with a value towards how much it's going to cost them to repave the road, and incorporate that with the city's portion, and make it a full restoration of the road. So, have a partnership. I know many communities do that beforehand. When they start to lay these things, they work together to try to figure out these paving projects, and there's a portion that is set aside from Boston Gas, because even if their patch is perfect, Boston Gas, it doesn't always meet the condition of the roadway that they're working within. So, when they're pulling during the frost piece, what's happening is they're heaving the roads. And in my personal opinion, through years of doing this, I would never let a company dig between November 15th and April 15th for that very reason. Stress cracks the road, you got heaves. If you go over to Sanders Ave., you certainly can see it, that that roadway should have been milled and overlaid curb to curb because of the damage done because of the digging time of year. Mr. Mayor, through you to the manager, would you happen to have a comment on that?
Mr. Manager? Okay. Mr. Manager, do you want to, the rep to go first? Go ahead. National Grid representative?
Okay. Yeah. So, with regards, again, if the patch is inadequate, so, yes, working through the winter, it's a little bit different. We do have every job that's completed by National Grid, there's an inspector that goes out between 30 days and 60 days and inspects the patch, and then they go out after a year and inspect it again. The winter is a little different. I do believe they go out the 30, 60 day, but then they go out at the end of the winter season, opening the spring, when the asphalt plants are back open, because sometimes they do just an initial paving, and they do the final paving once the asphalt plants have opened. So, that, again, if you see any, just let me know. But, we can't do curb to curb paving on main replacements, because these types of projects are part of the rate case, and they go back to the ratepayers. And as stewards of their charges, we have to, you know, we're protected from the DPU on some of this, and it's, you know, we have a legal department that's looked into this as well. So, I am pretty familiar with this part of it. And there are other programs at National Grids where cities and towns can apply for funds for different things, but to attach a curb to curb paving to a main replacement job, you know, in this sequence of disorder sequence, we cannot do.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. I would like to take this also offline, if it's okay with the council, to have a discussion with National Grid. As I understand it, counselor, if they're trenching, and I'm only using percentages, 30% of the road, maybe at that same time, we could take the remaining 70. I understand the DPU, the Department of Public Utilities, and the finances that are behind that. So, if it's okay with the representative from National Grid, if we could take this offline, I think we could have a discussion on re-milling those roads, but more of a cost sharing. Once again, not looking for National Grid to pay for the whole thing. It'd be an opportunity for the city to maybe utilize 70% of the cost as opposed to the 100%. I think, counselor, I believe I'm saying that correctly.
Yeah. And one thing I would stress to this, on the city's behalf, is that any digging done between November 15th and April 15th, that any trench that's dug should be milled and overlaid from curb to curb in the area that it's being dug, because it's stress-cracking these roads. And if you go over to Sanders, we've got multiple calls from that area that absolutely show that when they pulled out that trench, the frost heaved the road and stress cracked across. So, I think anybody who digs in this city between that timeframe should have to do curb to curb the width of the trench.
Mr. Manager?
So, once again, Mr. Mayor, through you to the council, I'd like to take this back, speak to National Grid and council. I know exactly where you're going, and I think it's a great idea to try to expand upon, if that's okay with the folks from National Grid.
Any other comments or question on that item? Hearing none. We'll now go through the next line item, 7.3, National Grid requests installation of conduit to feed transformer at 572 Lakeview Avenue. This portion is now open to all those in favor. Open to all those in favor, hearing none.
Hello, this is National Grid, David Boucher. I apologize, my video is not working. Can I speak?
Okay, go ahead. You may proceed.
Yep. From North End Office, 1101 Turnpike Street, senior designer David Boucher. I'm talking on an item where we're petitioning for 40 feet of, two conduits to go from pole 26 and into the property of, on Lakeview Avenue, to upgrade the service for the housing authority. A couple buildings there, a few buildings, four or five buildings there. They've asked us for the upgrade for their electric service, and that story, we would like to provide it coming from pole 26, and going underground 40 feet into the property, and into a transformer. And that's, that's pretty much it.
Anyone else speak in favor? That portion is now closed. Now open to all those who oppose. Open to all those opposed, hearing none, that portion is now closed. Need a motion to refer to one inspector for the report and recommendation by Councilor Janess, second by Councilor Scott. On favor, the I oppose, say no, the I have it, motions carry. We now go to the last public hearing on the agenda, 7.4, University of Massachusetts Lowell, UML, requests installation of duct bank at Broadway Street and Solomon Way. This portion now is open to all those in favor. You have speak in favor?
Yes.
Please state your name and your address, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, members of the council. My name is Adam Bakie. I'm the executive director of planning, design, and construction for UMass Lowell. And we are in the process of doing a multi-phase project to redo both our electric and steam infrastructure that serves our south campus. This particular request will allow us to install some conduits under Broadway Street that will connect our substation that serves the campus that's on the south side of Broadway Street with all the facilities on the north side. And we're looking for your support for that pathway for us. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to address them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak in favor? Hearing none, that portion is now closed. We're now open to all those who oppose. We're now open to all those who oppose. Open to all those who oppose. Hearing none. That portion is now closed. Any comment by the councillors?
Move to approve.
Move to approve, second by Councillor Yam. On favors, I oppose. Say no. The eyes have it. Motion is carry. That was the last item on the public hearing. We now go back to where we left off.
Mr. Mayor?
Councillor Janes?
I'd like to make a motion for suspension of the rules to take item 13 dot 11 out of order, as we have a registered speaker in attendance.
Motion by Councillor Janes to take item 13 point one?
11.
13 point 11. Second by Councillor Nguyen. Item 13 point 11, Councillor Janes, Councillor Nguyen, request city manager provide an update around Lowell's housing first strategy and hiring of a director of homelessness initiatives to address the needs of the unhoused population within our community. Mr. Cloak, we have a registered speaker?
We do. Eliana Brackett.
Thank you for hearing from me today. I just wanted to come and speak about the problems that we see in downtown Lowell. Being a business owner, I own Purple Carrot Bread Company. We've had lots of problems with the vagrant population, not so much the people who are getting help from the Lowell Transitional Center and all the aspects that I know that Lowell is working with to help homelessness. I know that they're working on housing and other aspects of feeding our homeless. This is an issue of people who do not want help. They want to live on the street. They continue to aggressively panhandle. They urinate and defecate in the doorways of businesses. And I watch them crowd mothers with children walking down the street. When they ignore them, they get very close. They wait till someone's putting money in the meter, and they crowd them. And they sit on park benches all day long and leave their trash under where they're sitting. And they sleep half on the sidewalk, half in the road where someone isn't paying attention, or their attention goes away for one moment. They would be run over. This is not just happening at odd hours. This is happening at nine in the morning. I've seen people drop their pants and urinate in a doorway of the bank across from where my cafe is. And I've seen people come out of the parking garage, see these four individuals sprawled out on the road, yelling at other people, yelling at high school students. And they just go back to the garage and leave. They don't shop. They don't open businesses in downtown. They don't support what we're trying to do in downtown. Before the pandemic, the downtown was thriving. It was growing. It was moving forward. The pandemic caused a lot of businesses to close, and that's unfortunate. But when that happened, more instances of the aggressive panhandling, the urination, the defecation on public property, and just sleeping and setting up a living room in a doorway, has gotten a lot worse. I am in a great relationship with the Lowell police. I call, they always respond, every single time. Doesn't matter if the person has left or not. I've had two of the four individuals that I'm speaking about violate a no trespass twice in one week, and another one the following week, twice in one week. And the police come, they move them along. But when I try to take it to the next level, whether it's court or even just having a sit-down, like a town hall meeting with the judges, they don't want to hear it. And to me, that says, my rights don't matter. My business doesn't matter. And I know that the city of Lowell enjoys my business. I know that people love coming to Purple Carrot, and that they want to see Lowell thrive. But when you get to this level and you do everything you're supposed to do, and nothing happens, because judges who are not living in the downtown, not seeing the downtown, don't want to have anything to talk about what's happening in downtown. And the only way that I feel that this could possibly change is if we all come together. It's not City Hall's job to fix this problem. It's not my job to fix this problem. It's not the police's job to fix this problem. It is our job as a community to find a way to deal with this. And I believe it is a behavioral problem. I believe that because it's mental illness, nobody wants to talk about it. Nobody wants to address it. They just want to put their head in the sand and not think about it. You can have mental illness and put your trash in the trash can. You can have mental illness, and you can go into a store and buy something and leave. You can be a homeless person and get food from somebody and be mentally ill, and still not cause problems, not throw coffees out the doorway when someone asks you to leave their cafe. I have compassion for mental illness. I have compassion for homelessness. I really don't have compassion for the fact that there is no rules, boundaries, and limitations for these four individuals. There's one of them that has 32 no trespasses in the downtown area. Thirty-two. I don't even think there's that many businesses open left to really have no trespasses for. But the police come in, and they have it on their face, too. They can't go any further. They can't do anything. They're hitting this wall because we can't get past it. It's not going to get fixed unless we can all sit down with lawyers, judges, city council, Lowell police, business owners, social workers, and have a discussion. And if that's not enough, let's create a rule and figure out how to build a law for the state. Let's take it to the state if we need to, but I can't do it by myself. I need people to step in, and I'm exhausted. I deal with this all day long. I go home, and I deal with other issues. That's a whole other story with people, you know, trespassing on my private property. So it's like, when is it my turn for my rights as a business owner to be supported, to be seen? And I don't think that disappearing these people or, you know, shipping them to another town, or whatever the problem is, is the answer. The answer is having compassion and being ethical with a decision, but also holding them accountable for their behavior. And their behavior is atrocious, and it's borderline. They wait, they see how close they can get without breaking the law. Someone got Section 12 yesterday. I watched the ambulance pick them up. They were back in an hour. No one is talking. No one is discussing. No one has a behavior plan for their behavior. And we need to treat it as a behavior plan. For 10 years, I worked with abused kids. I worked with mental illness. I have a bag of tricks that I can use to help me with, deal with these people in a compassionate way. I can't imagine the other business owners that don't have any tools, no tools, to understand. They must be terrified, because sometimes I'm terrified. When a six-foot man comes into your store, and he clearly is not on this planet, and he's screaming in your dining room, people are looking at you, because you're the owner, people are looking at you, and then they just kind of leave. It's like, I'm fighting for every customer that I have, because this pandemic, we're slowly coming back from it, but it's still not the same. I still don't have the same number of transactions that I had before the pandemic. And then to have people repelled, because I've got people laying down on the sidewalk in front of my cafe, or doorways that smell, or people coming into my cafe screaming at the top of their lungs, and you've asked them nicely to leave, and you're like, if he comes at me, I don't have a prayer. This guy's gonna, his arm length is twice my reach. I can't grapple with him. And no one should have to feel that way, you know? And again, that's not one person's problem. That's not just City Hall. That's not just the police. It's all of us as a community. It is our responsibility to help these people be better people, even if they decide to be homeless. They have to have accountability. They have to have rules, and they have to have boundaries and limitations, and they don't. And I just need there to be more. I need there to be more active meetings. I need there to be more understanding and less sticking our head in the sand, saying, oh, I don't know what to do with this, because it's mental illness. There's a way to bridge that gap. We just have to work together as a community. And I need to find a way to talk with judges, to speak to social workers, and get the support that we need. Because it's not going away. They don't deserve to be treated badly, but they do deserve to be helped to be better people. And I can't do that alone. And my business is suffering because of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Janes or Councillor Nguyen? Who wants to go first? Councillor Janes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to thank the Speaker for sharing her struggles with her business. You know, she's not alone. This is not a unique problem to the Purple Carrot, for sure. There are other businesses that have expressed similar issues for a while now. And as she mentioned, it really is a small number of individuals that cause most of these problems in our downtown. And I'd like to commend Chief Gollner and the entire Police Department for the work they've done. As the Speaker said, they show up, and they take care of what they can take care of. But this is not a problem that we can police our way out of. And I think that we need, it's time to refocus. The Hunger and Homeless Commission, it's time to get everyone reappointed and get that moving again. I think that's kind of where the nexus of this work should probably be happening. And so I look forward to that moving forward. And, you know, bringing on a Director of Homelessness Initiatives, to have somebody in the administration working on this is, I think, going to be a critical step to address this as well. So, thank you, and I look forward to the report and figuring out what next steps we can take to address this. Thank you.
Councillor Nguyen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank the speakers. I hear her plead. Very moving plea. I'm sure she's not alone. I'm sure it's not just the downtown problem. In the Cambodian towns as well and elsewhere, this is an issues that gone on throughout the city and not just in Lowell, throughout the Commonwealth. And it's not so much, I mean, if you're talking about unhoused population who want help. We have a great partner in our city. We have a great nonprofit organization and partner with the city to work to try to house people and take care of people. This is about the unhoused population who does not want help, who does not want to follow rule. You know, the Speaker spoke of the sit-down with the judge. I think it's a great idea, because when you have a trespassing again and again, we need to sit down with the judge. When you have this orderly conduct, again and again, sit down with the judge. The only person that can order, that can put condition for this individual to get help, to go to mental health, detox, and so on. That's where the wraparound kind of service, the housing, the housing first initiatives, supposed to be. A places where they can, they don't think about, they don't have to worry about housing or food, is there. When they get feet, when they get roof over their head, then we go and address the issues of mental health and/or substance abuse. So I think, you know, Manager Golden and his team, you know, invited to sit down. I'm sure the gentleman to my left is working in the court already. My colleague, you know, will help arrange that happening, so that we can address this issue once and for all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Mosia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before this city council meeting started this evening, I had the opportunity to go in the mayor's reception room. And in that room was a whole table surrounded by all the businesses that are in the downtown area. I didn't see the Speaker there. Unfortunately, she wasn't there. But what she said was, she reiterated everything that we said at that particular meeting earlier this evening. And I do agree with everything that she said. And I will reiterate what I said. We can have all the campaign slogans. There's a lot to like about Lowell, you know, destination city. We can have all these nice adjectives. But does it mean anything when we see businesses and we ask them to give us their blood, their sweat, and open up a restaurant for the enjoyment of people in, not just in Lowell, but surrounding communities to say, oh, I'm going to Lowell tonight. We're going out to eat at maybe the Purple Carrot, maybe the Mill City Barbecue. And then we see people that are, you know, spending their money and their time and their energy to create this nice feeling and nice business for the residents. And they come in in the morning to open up, and there's a person sleeping in their doorway. And everything she said about what she said, what she finds, is actually the truth, because I've seen it myself. I feel the frustration, and I don't know where to begin. And I asked the people there this evening, please help us. What do you, how can we do anything about this? What do you want us to do? Just when you go to lay the law down, you get the ACLU at our door saying they have rights. Well, I think their rights end when they infringe upon my rights. When they infringe upon the business owner's rights, then something has to be done. It's not that we don't have a heart, like we're heartless and we don't care about homeless. I think people need medication. They need to be monitored. I think the people need structure. They need oversight. They need to know that someone is telling us them and reminding them to take their medication and things. So I really sympathize with what this woman is saying. I'm sorry that her husband didn't feel the same when he went on Facebook and said something very derogatory towards me and Councillor Elliott. But that's not what it's all about this evening. But I do sympathize with everything that she said. Thank you.
Councillor Rook?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the manager. Mr. Manager, I think over the course of your term as city manager, and through motions and through comments such as what the Speaker spoke of, it looks as if you have the full support of the council to use every tool that you have to combat this. I know that, you know, there may have been some hesitation at some points in time to South Carmen and downtown. But I think after what you heard tonight, and from what other councillors have spoken about just over the past 20 minutes, I really think that you have the 100% support to use whatever agencies and partners within the city, within the state, to finally try to get a handle on this. You know, whether it be more motions coming forward or whatnot. But I think now the seriousness of the problem has brought to the forefront again. And, you know, I know it's been going on at the South Carmen over the past several months with the Police Department, and I know, you know, their frustration of seeing the same people over and over again with the downtown as well. It's probably five to 10 people that, you know, when I'm down there is always the case. And I think, you know, whether you're looking for a green light before, I think that you have it now to do what, you know, you think is necessary to combat the problem. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Kishia?
Through you, Mayor Chow, to Superintendent Gollner. Is he here? Could we speak to him, Mr. Manager? I saw you in the audience, so I had to ask. Last night, we were at a Highlands Neighborhood Committee meeting, and the same topic comes up. And the ones we're talking about right now, if we're reading the same pace correctly, are the ones who are aggressive homeless, more so in doing these things in people's businesses. You come down the connector, and you get off at Plain Street, and there's a man known to the police who has been aggressive towards the vehicles as they come down. The same thing downtown. It's one name, and you can say the name out loud, and everybody knows who the person is. And some people say that's just him being him. Well, how many, do we have enough support in the law system to arrest these individuals, as we would a normal taxpayer or a normal person who would just walk over and do these actions in the middle of City Hall or go down the street and do these, that is not homeless? And why are we not re-arresting and re-arresting and sending them? I don't care about the judge. I care about the police making the arrest on an individual who is doing something that is not appropriate at the time. And it's over and over again, or doing more surveillance in those areas. And you probably are, and I'm not saying that they're not. But this one resident last night at the Highlands Committee meeting was extremely upset, and that's her way home, down the connector, onto Plain Street. And right there, every day, she rolls up her window in fear of her life. And the same thing, you hear the stories about downtown, this one individual. Are they known to you like they were to the officer that was at the Neighborhood Committee?
Through Mr. Manager to the Chief.
Yeah, I think they're all known to many members of the Police Department. You know, there's several issues that come in play with the homeless. And I think the city solicitor can, I can defer to her on some of the issues where there's been ordinances proposed that have been basically overturned. And I think it was the city of Worcester that paid an exorbitant amount of money as a result of the ordinance in trying to control the panhandling and the homeless. So that's why I think the city-
So that's why I think the city had backed off on the ordinance at one point with the panhandling. We're, we're well aware, if, if they do break the law and the manager has been behind us on, on, on all our efforts in, in the downtown and trying to move and, and trying to keep, uh, control of all the disorder type of crimes. And that's what we've been doing is, I, I hope that everyone sees it in the Hamilton Canal District where we've been putting a lot of efforts. If, if they, if they become aggressive and they go on the street and, you know, we're called, then we will come and we will move them off of the street. They're not supposed to be on the street. If they do commit a crime, if they're, you know, public urination or whatever, some sort of indecency, then they will be arrested. There's a lot of issues once they do get to the court, and I'm sure the solicitor could speak at that as well with, if, if the individuals do have mental health issues. The Lowell District Court has what they call a mental health court, which it's voluntary. So if we do arrest the individual, they have to voluntarily go into the program. We can't force them into the program in which the court would help them get some services as well. We have our team that goes out every single day, as Councilor Mercier knows, with the police department, the fire department, the health department. We visit all the homeless, we visit the encampments, we try to get them help, we try to get them housing. We, um, you know, whatever the issues are, we're, we're aggressively trying to help them and try to keep them off the street. There are some ordinances that I, you know, that I think the city could look at in terms of controlling homeless on the sidewalks, blocking public ways, lying on the sidewalk. And maybe there's some other issues that we can get together as a group and look at. You know, there's a, in fact, Mary Ann Manzi, who's with me, she had found an ordinance by, through the city of Los Angeles, which they control actually sleeping, lying, blocking sidewalks. And, and that's an ordinance that was created by the city of Los Angeles. So I think that if we start looking at other things that we can do rather than the, um, you know, we're, we're not going to arrest our way out of this or the homeless issue because of the circumstances around it. But we can keep looking at other methods to help control it. And, you know, we, I hope that some of the issues with the downtown, we've changed our walking routes downtown to add two Monday through Friday, from 2:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. to try to help out with the businesses in the downtown area. So we have two from seven to three in that Merrimack Street corridor and two from, that come in at two to 10:00 as well to help with the after school. And then all the issues down there. So we, we are putting some extra people in the downtown, walking routes in the Hamilton Canal District. And we just got to try to keep moving them along. If they do commit crimes, they will get charged, they will get arrested. Some are summons, some people are trespassed and repeat offenders do get arrested. It's a, it's a difficult and continual problem that we're looking at with all the city services that are addressing.
Mayor Chow, through you to the manager, uh, Manager Golden. Plain Street at, um, Plain Street at the connector where you dump off, going towards Lowell Cow Wash, right there. That area has been a problem. And, and the resident said the person walks over aggressively, bangs on the window and goes. So maybe we can put someone over there for a while and watch the area and try to move the person along or, you know, stop it. And, and I understand what you're saying, arrest your way out of it. But if someone is doing something wrong, whether it's arrest your way out of it, they need to be arrested. And whether they're, you know, going to the bathroom on sidewalks or not. If someone is doing it, they need to be removed. And, and I understand the whole plight, but that's our job. And, you know, you're watching businesses and she's not the only business that has come to us all privately and sent all emails over saying, you know, we need help. So, and, and I do applaud that there are walking beats down there because there's been walking beats in downtown since before I was a kid. And I think we just have to get more into it and just make sure that we're trying to protect the times that they're open. Thank you.
Mr. Manager, do you want to make a comment to that or?
Uh, no, I think that, uh,
Okay.
By looking at the superintendent, I think we're on the same page with making sure that that is pleased in that area.
Okay, I know a couple of the councilors want to make comment, but I, I want to just go back to, uh, the chief was referring to have Madam Solicitor make a comment on what happened with the ACLU or some ordinance that was done before.
Sure. So, as the chief was, was noting, the city had had a, an ordinance that was aimed at panhandling specifically. And there were, it was really a two-pronged approach. And part of it really was aimed at our downtown area. Because we have the national park, it could be seen as a tourist attraction. And there are different laws that, different standards of review for those types of settings. Unfortunately, the, while we had initial success along with other communities, appellate review of these ordinances from municipalities had ruled that they were constitutionally impermissible. That said, when there are laws being broken, I mean, as it happened just tonight, I had stepped out to grab a coffee, came back, and I had noticed somebody sleeping on a bench right outside of Market Basket. And I called the chief and, and I actually ran into a police officer. And he, I told him what was going on and he immediately went to check on the individual and to then, and then to move them, move them along. Anytime there are laws being broken, that can be addressed. The public way has to remain open. Those benches that are used by the elderly, waiting for the bus when they go to do their shopping. Those are not meant, obviously, for, for sleeping. And, and I think the police are constantly, as the speaker had indicated, constantly addressing those types of problems. But when we get into panhandling and homelessness, there are other levels of review. The manager has been conducting internal meetings to, to help better address homelessness and to set the city up in a way that it can be, it can be addressed. And I think by collectively sticking at these issues with the council and the police department, the manager's office. These issues might not ultimately be completely solved, but, but I do think it'll make a difference and it will continue to make a difference and, and move us into a more tolerable direction.
Thank you. I have Counselor Leahy Robinson and Drinkwater go next. Counselor Leahy?
Sure. Through you, the manager, I just want to ask, so with the problem at the connector, Plain Street and the connector, would you have any idea like how many times we go out there to pick up the trash?
Mr. Manager?
Is there something we can do with littering on that spot? I mean, some of it's picked up, some of it isn't, but it seems like that's a regular trash pickup now, right? It's got to be at least once a week, if not more. So maybe we could approach it right that way. The downtown area, I've been working down there for a couple of weeks. I've seen the extra patrols. But, you know, over on Lee Street, some of these individuals don't have to move. It's like a picnic over there. People bring them food, people leave food on the windows in the businesses. I witnessed the people buying their drugs. I reported it to the officer walking around. So maybe we should be looking for these cars coming into the city with the new cameras we have. You know, if, if we're going to show some compassion, don't bring the food to them, make them go to the food. You know, I mean, it's, there's two individuals just living right across from the street. They live in that parking lot. The other day, it was like a schmooys boy. He had Domino's Pizza, he had Burger King, he had all supplies there, two cases of water. Then I watched him buy his whatever and he went back to his spot and took a nap for a couple hours. So, you know, we have to just, like everyone's saying, we have to just try to approach this in a different manner, so. But it's, you know, it's a problem. Thank you.
Mr. Manager, no comment, just all the response. Thank you. Would you like to respond, Mr. Manager?
Please, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. We have been meeting once a week in regards to homelessness since I've got on in the past four months. And it is, it's something we're taking extremely serious, obviously. We are this close to the homeless coordinator coming on board. When I say this close, we're just going through the appropriate paperwork. That has taken obviously some time. But I think that what we're trying to do and especially working with legal is to make sure whatever we're, whatever we are going to do is obviously appropriate. It is exactly what everyone's talking about is being reasonable and also having empathy for these folks. But at that same time, trying to set a new standard without crossing any lines. So that's, you know, that's obviously, as, as everybody can imagine, that's a difficult challenge to, to overcome. So that has been happening very frequently, once a week we still meet. Matter of fact, tomorrow at 2:00, we'll be meeting again just to more or less talk about when the homeless coordinator will be starting, what will be happening and how to tackle this. We've met with Co-op, who is doing a great job throughout the city of Lowell. And of course, having this, this overall issue with the courts, did speak briefly with one of the justices over there a few weeks back. And that is something that I would hope to put together sooner rather than later. This justice is very familiar with the area, matter of fact, lives in the city and is willing to try to help. So it's, it's, uh, it's not an easy situation, but it's something that we're taking extremely serious. And we hear the, we hear the plights. And I know that everybody here is reading the emails that come in through our city Lowell website. So the administration's on it. I know most of, not most, all of you have talked to me about it at one point or another. So I'm hoping to find out how to accomplish this. And if anybody has any ideas on it, please don't, don't hesitate.
Your answer, Counselor Leahy? Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. Some of these ideas might be through you to the solicitor. What, what it sounds like to me, we, we're having a big problem with repeat offenders. Small minority handful of people at these locations that are well-known. We're not talking about, you know, the, the people that have fell in hard times and we're talking about repeat offenders. One, what's the importance or how enforceable is something as simple that you've seen everywhere, no loitering? I mean, does that give a little bit of teeth to our enforcement professionals to keep people moving along? Second thing, we start talking about panhandling and soliciting. I mean, everybody I've ever seen that wants to fundraise in a public space has to pull a permit. Would that also give a little bit more teeth to our law enforcement professionals to where? We allow fundraising, we allow soliciting for funds for fundraising, but you must have a permit in a public space, pretty much. If, if we require that across the board, now officers can at least, if there's, if they're panhandling, excuse me, do you have a permit? Chances are, there's no permit pulled, move along. I mean, any little thing that we can do to empower our law enforcement professionals to keep these people moving along and not congregated in the areas? Because it, it seems like on a local level, our police are toolists. They don't have really many things at their disposal to usher these people out of the areas that they repeatedly offend. Maybe that is through you, Mr. Mayor, to the solicitor's office. But would those be some at least ideas to start empowering our people?
Through Mr. Manager to Madam Solicitor?
Thank you. With respect to pulling a permit and things of that nature, the, what the courts have looked at in that is, is individuals that don't have the means to perhaps pull a, pull a permit. You still can't then curb their constitutional right of free speech. So, um, you know, these, these issues become obviously very, very complicated. It, the laws really turn on, on what they're aimed at. And when it comes to the, the public way and public safety, that's where we are at our strongest. And I think the police do a, a very good job of keeping that, keeping the public way as safe as it can be. But these are things that historically have been looked at. And, I mean, obviously, we'll continue to look at, look at these. But the, the permit unfortunately is not necessarily a, a solution. I, I mean, but is it, these are the ideas that, that have been looked at.
Thank you very much. I mean,
On the right track there.
Is that state by state too? Because I mean, even when you visit a place like Las Vegas, they're not even allowed to speak to you to solicit any kind of business or anything. They, they held handheld clickers. If they're caught speaking to tourists or passersby's, they get cautioned and fined. I mean, is this something specific to Massachusetts? Or is this something that we're just modeling after the wrong legal pieces that exist?
So these are, uh, these laws are controlled to some degree in terms of the federal circuit courts. We, we obviously are in the, in this northeast, we're in the first circuit. And, and there is some variation between the appellate courts in terms of what they will allow and what they, what they will not. You know, when, when Lowell had originally adopted its panhandling ordinance, we were on solid ground. And then there was a, a sudden, and I would say very unexpected change that actually came from the Supreme Court. And, and so that then becomes the law of the land.
Thank you very much.
Your answer, Counselor? Counselor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, you know, this is one of many, I would maybe even say dozens of discussions I've participated in and, you know, on this council floor and at neighborhood meetings on, on this issue. And it's one of the, the biggest and most complex and hard to solve issues that we take on year after year. And I really believe the issue is that, you know, this is not just a homelessness issue. This is a, a mental health crisis issue. And what we're running up against, I believe, is that the type of mental health treatment that these individuals whom we're discussing here tonight, the type of treatment they need to really get themselves better, takes weeks of inpatient treatment in, in a, in hospital setting. Things to, to get medications right before that they can go back out on the streets and, and be able to get on a better path. And that is an incredibly complex problem to solve. It involves our entire healthcare and, and mental health infrastructure. And it's really especially difficult thing to solve from the city council floor. And what I've heard here tonight is that we, we can't arrest our way out of the problem. Whether given our current laws or, or potential laws. Because from having discussion over and over, one thing I always hear is that when individuals are arrested for, for breaking the law, they're very often out back in the, the same spot on the same streets within sometimes a matter of days. And that seems to be the cycle that repeats itself. So I, I think the question that we really need to answer at both the, the city, the state and the federal level is how do we get these individuals the actual appropriate mental health care, inpatient-type treatment that they need? And probably too much to get into tonight. I know that Superintendent Golden referred to, you know, there are some individuals who've been assisted by the, the mental health courts. Some people might be ready to commit to voluntary mental health treatment. I know there are many, this has been a successful undertaking by the courts to get people voluntary treatment. But the fact of the matter is, is that the handful of individuals who we're really talking about tonight most likely aren't going to commit to voluntary mental health treatment. So I think what we really need to take on is, you know, there, I know there are a limited number of tools in the, in the tool belt to, to potentially, you know, get individuals in involuntary treatment if they present a danger to themselves or to others. But there are also, you know, real civil liberties that individuals have that make it really difficult to, to get people assistance through involuntary treatment. So we're not going to solve this tonight, but I, I think, you know, we need to keep pushing this forward to our, our state-elected officials, federal-elected officials to, how can we get individuals, you know, appropriate lengthy stays in, in patient treatment to actually get them better? So we're not attempting to arrest a way out of the problem and have them end up back on the streets. And I wish I had an answer to that problem that I could give here tonight. This is going to take a long time and most likely a lot of public investment to make sure that these individuals are getting treatment. But I, I hope we can continue that. And as the motion states, I mean, this is really about coming together to formulate a plan at, at the city level to really take on these big challenges and come up with real policy solutions. So I appreciate this motion being, being brought forward. Sometimes I feel like I'm, you know, repeating myself, you know, through all these discussions. But, you know, this is going to take a, a serious investment in our mental health infrastructure. And I hope we can continue to work towards that. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Musia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know it's a touchy, sensitive subject. People don't want to hear probably what I'm going to say. But when you have a small child and the baby is growing up, you set rules and you set guidelines. You don't is growing up, you set rules and you set guidelines. You don't let them, so to speak, run amok. You just don't do it, or you're going to be faced with terror. That's what's going to happen. Same thing in the City of Lowell. We need to set rules and stick by them. This is what I'm saying. If, I don't care what shape you're in or whatever, but if you're in the house, you don't take, or you're in your yard, you don't take your meal in your containers and just throw them all over the place. I don't expect my city to look like the way it is. It's not really looking good when I go through different areas. There are solutions to some degree. We don't want to see trash, and I could take you to, I don't know, maybe 50 places throughout the city that you're going to see a pileup of containers and styrofoam to-go boxes, and it's frustrating, because I wouldn't put up with it in front of my house. I'd pick it up, and yet, we're all over the city and we see this. I would say, notify the organizations that feed the homeless, and thank you very much for doing that. They need to eat too. We're good enough, the organizations are good enough to feed people in need, and I'm very grateful for that. But, set a rule. You can't take your trays or food out of the building. We have an infestation of rats in the city. Don't we realize this? Go up to Pawtucket Boulevard, to the Pawtucket High S Bridge, to the Vigados Brothers Overpass, and see that every day, there's trash there, there's trash there. The city is picking it up and picking it up and picking it up. I feel bad for the DPW, and people say, "The city's a mess. It's the DPW's fault." No, it isn't. No, it is not. Take a bench. I came here this afternoon, well, before 5:00, to come to City Hall. I'm going up Merrimack Street downtown. I see this guy. He sprawled out on a bench. His shirt is up to here. His belly is sticking out. It was an unsightly sight. Yeah, I will tell you that. It was disgusting. But, anyway, he's sound asleep, enjoying it himself. There is a solution. If this bench is seating two people, put an armrest in the middle of it. Put a divider in the middle of it. If it's a bench that has three people that can sit there, put two dividers. Let people sit. Let the elderly come out of their house and enjoy sitting down instead of having to walk by and be tired because someone is laying across the bench. I don't think you'll see anybody laying across a bench that has dividers there. This is my opinion there. So, I say, stop the delivery service. I appreciate the fact that everybody's doing these things and helping. I don't have delivery service coming to me. I don't know, if they can walk a great distance to go to their dealer, let them walk inside a facility, sit down, have a meal, fill yourself up, and leave. And, leave the trash behind for the organization to get rid of the garbage, the trash, instead of throwing it in the common, throwing it on the corner. It's disgusting when I go to work up Summer Street and South Street and see piles of trash over here and there and there. I'll tell you right now, if I lived across the street from the South Common, I would get every single family that lives in there and pays valuable tax dollar to look out their window and see all that trash. Not acceptable to me. And then, you got another thing. I don't know how we figure this out, but we set ordinances. Here's an ordinance. It says, "No loitering. No loitering. Move along. Move along." Are we that afraid of the ACLU that we're petrified? We're letting the people overtake this city. It isn't becoming a destination city. I'm sorry to bust everybody's bubble. I'm saying what I personally feel that maybe a lot of people don't want to say. Now, I thought the ordinance on the book said, "You may not be in the park one hour after sunset, between one hour after sunset to one hour after sunrise," or something to that effect. You cannot be in a park, but you can tent in a park? We have a lot of police that go in the area, and Chief, I'm saying it to Chief Goldner, they don't know what to, their hands are tied with everybody farming tents. We got a 10-member tent, a 10, it's like a, I don't know, a condo unit in the form of a tent in the South Common. I mean, I don't get what, you know, if we don't do something, they're going to, it's going to be overpowerful, and people are going to throw their hands up. You talk about an exodus, you'll be getting people exiting. You're getting the businesses now wanting to leave. I can't blame them. I mean, gee, we got to do something. We got to put our foot down. We got to set rules and boundaries. We have to have goals. We have to have results. We have to have results. I don't see it. I don't see it. I could go on and on, but I won't, because I think you get the drift that I am frustrated. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Scott, you all sent?
I'll say.
Counsel Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city manager, one thing that I'd like to see us at least try to do is reach out to the state administration and your friends at the State House to ask them about, the state has gone forward with setting up the Old Shattuck Hospital in Boston as supportive housing to address many of these issues as Boston has been experiencing. I really think that one of the next steps here would be to have the state look into setting up something similar in the Merrimack Valley. Not sure where that would be or how it would work, but the state has clearly recognized that this is a need for Boston, and it's a need across the state. It's a need across the country, really. So, I don't know if there's levers we can pull or buttons we can push to try and get them moving, because really, the answer at the end of the day is supportive housing. Getting these folks to be in a situation where they can and want to better themselves and make, you know, make themselves better citizens, and that's really, I think, where we need to go with this. And, we as the city are not going to be able to do this on our own. The state really needs to step up here and help us out, just like they've done for Boston. So, I obviously don't think that this should be something that just Lowell addresses, and I hope that our friends at the state level, whether it's this administration or the next one, will step up and look for ways to help us in this. Thank you.
Mr. Manager, would you like to make a comment now?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the members of the council. That's something I think we could reach out to our state reps and senators, excuse me, to have a discussion with Health and Human Services to find out how that supportive housing can happen, and well, we will make that happen.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Counsel Robinson?
Real quick, if the ACLU has come in the past and told us what we couldn't do with a lot of these issues, do they offer any what you can do's to communities? Will they come in and try to help advise communities to formulate a game plan to address some of this stuff? I mean, because if it's working with someone like an ACLU, maybe there's some, something overlooking. I mean, if they're the pretty much authority that's going to overrule what small communities are trying to do to alleviate these problems, is there any way that we could look to them for some advice as to what they would be okay with?
Through Mr. Manager, you want to make a comment, or you want to refer to?
I'd like to make a comment, Mr. Mayor. It's the council. We have looked at different cities and towns and what they've tried to do, and then we see the responses just six to eight months later, what the ACLU has asked them to do, and they've pulled back. I think the latest one was Brockton that we looked at, Brockton Falls River. But, I want to ask the, our legal team here, you know, would they actually offer it, or do they actually tell us, "No, you just can't do that"? Do they offer any other solutions? I'm not aware of that. I've just seen instances when we look online to see what other cities and towns are doing, that they end up sometimes pulling stuff back simply because of fear of being sued, if you would.
Through Mr. Manager to Madam Solicitor.
I mean, not per se, but the, as communities struggle with these different issues, there is case law that we can turn to. So, I mean, when you're looking at places like Boston, and you're trying to address tents and things of that nature, there are things that communities can take advantage of in working with this particular population. Notice, giving them plenty of notice, making sure that those that are homeless, that are living in tents, have a place to go. And, so, following some of those steps are the things that you can do, that have been deemed acceptable by courts. You know, sometimes just a week's notice has been deemed acceptable by courts. And, again, making sure that there are beds to, if someone's going to be displaced, and if they don't have a place to go and they're homeless, then we need to, if we're going to displace them, we need to be able to direct them to a place where they can stay.
Thank you.
Counsel Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a quick question. I also received many calls about the Plain Street Target, the exit there. The man stands in and out of traffic. Now, I would think that would be something, that would be an enforceable ordinance or whatever, that we can work on that. But, you said public way type things that we can move forward with. Is there a list that's been provided to the police department as possible solutions for blocking the sidewalk, blocking intersections, things like that?
Yeah, I mean, the public ways have to remain open, and things that impede or raise concerns with respect to public safety, those are the things that can be addressed. So, having people standing in traffic are items that can be addressed, particularly if they're creating a danger to drivers and to themselves.
So, someone that's continuously on the off-ramp of the highway?
Yeah.
I would think just being on the off-ramp of the highway would not be an allowed thing. So, how does that continue, that he is there every single day of the week for the last two years?
Yeah.
If it's not an allowed thing?
Well, I think they just keep going back, is the problem. But, yeah.
I'm sorry?
I think they just keep going, you know, they obviously just keep going back. But, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
You asked a counselor. No other comments? That was a good motion. On the favor of the eye, post say no, the eyes have it. Motion's carry. Do, are there any, Mr. Clerk, any other motions that has registered speaker?
No.
No? Okay. Any counselors, any line items that you expect somebody in the public that's going to speak on? So, Counsel Rook?
Yeah, could we please do 8.3?
Motion by Counsel Rook to take item 8.3 out of order, seconded by Counsel Scott. 8.3 is communication appointment of Mr. George, and Mr. Prokop, you correct me this like 50 times, George Prokop to ZBA. Motion to doubt by Counsel Gishia, seconded by Counsel Leahy. Any comments by the Counselor? Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes.
Counsel Rook?
Yes.
Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Counsel Yem?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Gishia?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercy?
Yes.
Counsel Milne?
Yes.
11 years.
Mr. Manager, you want to make any comment? Mr. Prokop, any comment?
Thank you. I didn't expect to speak here tonight. I just came to say hello. But, I appreciate your vote of confidence to this illustrious board. I've always found it important to serve the city in any capacity that I find that I'm allowed to, and I think that the zoning board has a lot of integrity that we try to bring to the city. We try to work with people, and I believe that this continued position, I believe that I can, we can do a lot for this city. There's a lot that needs to be improved, and I'm hoping that the knowledge that we have and we gain from, you know, from the zoning, from a zoning perspective would only put the city in a better light. Thank you.
Congratulations. Counselors, any other line item that you expecting somebody to speak on? Hearing none, well, go to where we left off originally. That was the line item number three. City Clerk, 3.1, Minutes of Nonprofit Organization Subcommittee, August 23rd. City Council Regular Meeting, August 23rd for Acceptance. Motion to accept and place on file by Counsel Mercy, seconded by Counsel Yem, on favor of the eye, post say no, the eyes have it. Motion's carry. Now, go to four, Auditor Business, 4.1, informational, year-to-date budget reports for period ending June 30th, 2022, which will cover, the report will cover general fund revenue, general fund expenditures, parking, water, and wastewater. Mr. Manager? Through Mr. Manager to the Auditor's Office. Madam Auditor?
Thank you. So, on tonight's agenda, I have included for the council and the public's review, the year-to-date budget reports for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2022. These reports are preliminary in nature and are subject to review by the Department of Revenue and an independent audit by Powers &amp; Sullivan. Both of those should be completed by February or March of 2023. But, just to briefly, to provide a brief synopsis, the results in the general fund are very positive. The actual revenue collected exceeds the budgeted amounts by approximately $3 million. Amounts unspent at the end of the year, total approximately $7.7 million, and the majority of those turnbacks are from salary and wage line items. The results in the enterprise funds are not necessarily as positive. All three funds, parking, water, and wastewater, had an overall net result that decreases the retained earnings balance as of June 30th. So, I'll just keep it brief, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Counsel Gishia?
Mayor Chow, through you to the auditor. When you look at this report, there's some things that stand out, especially on the revenue side. There are projections that didn't even come, well, they didn't meet the projections, and just three accounts really stand out more than the others. When you look at the personal property, the real estate, and the motor vehicle excise tax, just those three alone look like there's $5 million that haven't been generated. I guess my question is, going forward, are we missing a reporting section that people will pay those eventually and they come back, or is it something that we chase for a long period of time for those funds, and will it be reported within this depending on when you get those revenues? Or is that through you to the CFO?
Yeah, through Mr. Manager to Madam Auditor, or through the CFO, Mr. Ball?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the auditor certainly has experience as it relates to taxes in her former role. But, for those particular revenue accounts, it's usual for the city to see a collection percentage in the range of 98% or 99%, 98%, 97% for real estate, personal property, and other real property taxes. Those amounts that are uncollected in the year will be recognized when they are collected, and so, if they're collected either in FY '23 or in subsequent fiscal years, from an accounting standpoint, they're recorded when they're collected. Now, it's the case that not 100% of the revenue is collected in the year, and the city pursues the available remedies to it, one of which is noted later on in the agenda from the Solicitor's Office on tax lien sales. We do pursue all remedies available to us under the law to collect any outstanding taxes, but this percentage that's noted in the revenue report before the council tonight is on par with what we normally see in a year.
So, when I look back at these accounts, and you look at the personal property or the real estate or the motor vehicle excise tax, every single year comes in, it or the real estate or the motor vehicle excise tax, every single year comes in at 100% eventually. So if I go by that and we say that, so $5 million over this should be coming our way eventually, is what I'm hearing you say, because every account has been at 100% going that way. And then we also have 2.9 million that we went over. So if I look at this whole piece together, we got 2.9 million at the end of this, not including the enterprise funds, which are a whole nother subject. And the 5 million, so there's roughly $8 million in overages that should come back to the city in the end. Am I reading that right? Through you to the auditor?
Through Mr. Manager to Madam Auditor?
Yes. So, so the real estate tax, I mean, typically in the first year when we bill it, you know, I, I would agree that in FY '22, the collections were down, but I think that had a lot to do with the, the billing and the fact that that third quarter bill was delayed and everything was due on May 1. Now, as far as excise tax, in the year of the commitment, so the collection, it, the commitment was $9.5 million, but the collection result, the actual revenue that we collected and can recognize as revenue was 7.5 million, which is 79% of the commitment, and that is consistent with prior years. With excise tax, we don't, we don't collect it all in the first year, but because of the collection process with excise tax, we will eventually collect 100% of that. It just takes, you know, time. As it goes through the collection process, people will end up marked at the registry and then we will collect it because they won't be able to renew.
I just don't want to take up too much time. I would rather send this to a sub, finance subcommittee, because I think it really needs to be digested better by the, the council. So I'd like to make a motion to send this to the finance subcommittee.
Second it.
Okay. Motion by Counselor Gishia to refer to finance subcommittee, second by Counselor Robinson. On favors, would that be the entire thing, Counselor Gishia, the entire report from the general fund revenue, the fund expenditure, parking, water, and wastewater, the whole thing?
Yes, please.
Okay. On favors, I post say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. We now go to five, unfinished business, 5.1, nonprofit organization, subcommittee, August 23rd, 2022 meeting. Counselor Nguyen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The nonprofit subcommittee met on the August 23rd at 5:30 PM at this chamber. Present was myself, Counsel Rook, and Counsel Scott. Also were present is Counselor Gitchia and Counselor Mercier. A number of organizations, a good partner in the city of Lowell was also in attending. So they are, every speakers, speaker after speakers actually expressed, you know, their thanks for the opportunity to check in and share what they are doing. So they're talking about during the COVID and even now, I mean, during the COVID and now even more so, they opened their door and they do more with less resource and staffing. They highlight some of the concerns, some of the challenge. We spoke of as well, housing since mental health and substance abuse and some lack of funding. They all, they also thanked the council, you know, for the invitation, as I said. They asked that we invite them back on a regular basis to check in and share with the council on what they're doing. And that's report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for the report. Any other comments regarding the report?
Just, just a quick, quick one. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been contacted by smaller nonprofit organization. They just want to make known that when time come to distribute the oppa fund, you know, be mindful of the smaller nonprofit who really, really need help while the bigger nonprofit well established, they have, you know, multimillion dollars funding. So they just ask us as a council, through us, through the manager, to, just to be mindful of, of their, their needs because they are struggling after the pandemic to provide, continue to provide services critical to the unmet need population. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
The eyes have it, motions carry. We now go to 5.2, wire inspector reports. There are two requests. Number one is Boston Gas, DBA National Grid request installation of scatter box and vent pole on Boston Road at Spencer Street. And the second request is National Grid request installation of underground conduit at Vonnam Avenue and Boulevard Street. No comments from the, by any of the counselors, need a motion to accept and adopt accompanying orders by Counselor Leahy, second by Counsel Drinkwater. On favors, I post say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. We now go to 5.3, claims, six property damage, no comment. Motion to refer to Law Department for report and recommendation by Counselor Mercier, second by Counselor Scott. On favors, I post say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. We now go to the motions. This is from the old business as well, not, not the new motions, the old motions of 5.4.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Rook?
I apologize. I shouldn't have thrown you. Could you do 8.2 before we start?
8.2, motion by Counselor Rook to move up 8.2 out of order, second by Counselor Nguyen. 8.2. Okay. 8.2 is communication appointment of Alan Brito to Board of Assessors. Any comment? Motion to adopt by Counselor Rook, second by Counselor Leahy. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rook?
Yes.
Counsel Scott? Counsel Yem?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Gishia?
Yes.
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercier?
Yes.
Counsel Nguyen?
Yes.
Ten yeas.
Any comment, Mr. Manager or Miss, Mr. Manager? No. Is she present?
Mr. Mayor, while we on the subject of appointment, would you bundle 8.4 and 8.5 together, Mr. Mayor?
Hold on, second Counselor. Yes, is Miss Brito here to say something or no? No. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would just, yeah, just thank her for being here tonight and, you know, for sitting through and just, you know, welcome her to, to the board and again, thanking her for her service.
Thank you. Welcome. Okay. Counsel Yem?
While we on the appointment, Mr. Mayor, I would like to just bundle 8.4 and 8.5 together if that's possible.
Sure, absolutely. Motion by Counselor Yem to move item 8.4 and 8.5 up the, the agenda. 8.4 is communication correction to appointment of Allison Keegan to Board of Health. Motion to adopt by Counselor Yem, second by Counselor Scott. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rook?
Yes.
Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Counsel Yem?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Gishia?
Yes.
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercier?
Yes.
Counsel Nguyen?
Yes.
Eleven yeas.
I don't see Ms. Keegan here. So we go to 8.5, communication, reappointment of Dennis McCarthy to ZBA. Motion to adopt by Counselor Gishia, second by Counsel Drinkwater. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rook?
Yes.
Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Counsel Yem?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Gishia?
Yes.
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercier?
Yes.
Counsel Nguyen?
Yes.
Eleven yeas.
This is Mr. McCarthy here to make any comment. Don't see him. Okay. Any other counselors, any other item that need to be taken out of order? Counsel Robinson?
Can, can we just finish 8.6 and then 8.7 since we're here? That's the last.
Motion by Counselor Robinson, take 8.6, 8.7 out of order, second by Counselor Yem. Item 8.6, communication resignation of Cecilia Hernandez from Citizen Advisory Committee. Motion to accept and place on file by Counsel Robinson, second by Counselor Nguyen. On favors, I post say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. 8.7, communication, city manager request out-of-state travel. One, Mayor. Motion to adopt by Counselor Robinson, second by Counselor Yem. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rook?
Yes.
Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Counsel Yem?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Gishia?
Yes.
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercier?
Yes.
Counsel Nguyen?
Yes.
Eleven yeas.
Any comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Mercier?
Are we still under suspension of the rules?
We can be, yes.
Okay, could I suspend the rules to say if we could bundle all the votes, 9.1 to 9.12?
That's a great motion. Counselor Mercier?
Mr. Mayor, before we do that, may I make a comment on 8.7, please?
Absolutely. Counsel Janess?
Thank you very much. I just had a quick question for this, both for my edification as well as the public. If we could just mention which line item from the budget that this is coming out of, just so people are aware?
Sure, this is out of the mayor's budget. I will refer to Mr. CFO.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, the funding for this item will come from the mayor's office's budget. There is a particular line item in the budget that was approved by the council for travel, transportation, reimbursement, and seminars. And there is sufficient money in the budget to cover the expense.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. That's all.
Any other comments? Here none. Motion by Counselor Mercier to bundle 9.1 through 9.12, second by Counselor Robinson. I would just read the, all the line items so people are aware of what's included. And you can, even if it's bundling, we can make comments towards the end. 9.1, vote accept expend $15,000, address verification program grant. 9.2, vote accept expend $300,000, SOR PEC grant. 9.3, vote accept expend $42,719.30, state 911 Department EMD grant. 9.4, vote accept expend $460,496, state 911 Department Support and Incentive Grant. 9.5, vote accept expend $60,539.22, state 911 Fiscal Year 23 Training Grant. 9.6, vote accept expend Fiscal Year 23 earmark funds Maury Elementary School. 9.7, vote approve exemption of Rebecca Mafra MGL Chapter 268A subsection 20. Excuse me. 9.8, vote authorize city manager execute lease agreement with Degmar Development Corporation. 9.9, vote license agreement with Anton Temponey Almeida. 9.10, vote license agreement with Kiwanis Club of Grey Lowell City Hall. 9.11, vote transfer $46,730 LPD. The last item that bundle for the votes, 9.12, vote transfer $543,000 DPW. Any comments or questions by the counselor? Counsel Robinson?
I'd just like to say on vote 912, thank you. And I hope it's the first of many that we're going to start making commitment and swapping out some of our old equipment in addition to providing our employees the tools that they need. I mean, I know it's, it's going to be a long process and with turnaround times and lead times, it's a little crazy, but it's a step in the right direction. Thank you.
Counsel Gishia?
I want to echo Counsel Robinson's thoughts, but I also want to say that we need to do better on our capital planning so we don't have to wait two years while things are failing. But I also have a question for 9.8, the agreement for the police precinct. What were the three years prior cost? Because I didn't see that in the memo. I just wonder, you know, has there been a change to that agreement and what actually is it?
Mr. Manager?
I'll be reaching out to the chief on that contract, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Through Mr. Manager to the chief.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, the previous agreement for the Centerville precinct, $3,200?
$3,200 a month.
$3,200 a month.
What does that equal a year? I just have to go through a calculator. Figure it out with a calculator. So this, this contract in the first year goes up $2,400 a year. In out years, it goes up $5,200 a year?
They actually wanted to go up more based on all the utility costs and everything associated with, with the lease. And we basically had to negotiate with them down to that first year to the $2,400 increase. And then, you know, the ability to go up in the second two years of the lease. So with all costs and the square footage of the precinct and all utility increases and everything, so that's, we had to agree to.
Chief, if we pulled this off the table tonight and got a report on the past cost of this precinct, would that be anything that would harm going forward? Or is this something that needs to be done right away? Because I just think that we should have past agreements and see exactly what we were paying and see exactly where we're going from here on any lease that comes through. And it, and it's not just the precinct, but I just think we should know more about what we're, what the cost and what the drivers are.
That's fine. We can provide all of that information. And I, I believe one of the issues has been that he really hasn't raised the cost for us in several years. And basically, because of all the costs and increases and everything over the course of, of this past year, he's had to go up on the lease. And we tried to negotiate it down and kept it lower for the first year. And he basically said that they, they do need to increase the cost over the course of the next two years. And so that's why we're at that figure right now. But we can provide you all the information, get all the cost factors for the past few years, which they have kept fairly low for us. And this is one of only two precincts, I believe, that we currently pay for. All the rest of the precincts in the city, we do get for free, which is, you know, that, that is a bonus to us as well. And, oh yeah, and everything in this lease, Counsel, is included. That's complete, all the utilities and everything.
Yeah. And, and those are the things that I would just like to see before I take a vote on something, because I'm just like in the dock right now trying to figure out what is the price. And to me, when you look at where that is for $40,000 a year, it seems like a lot of money. But when you add in the things you're talking about, everything included, it, it changes what the perception is of, of the amount. So I would just like to make a motion to pull 9.8 out and just get more information.
If there's no comment from other counsel, Counsel Gishia, if I may, it sounds like he's asking for a report of the past three years, which is already had happened. It's a mad report. Would it be okay for the chief to provide the report, just vote this, include the bundle, and just have the chief provide the report after, after tonight? Would that be okay?
I won't support something without seeing, you know, the history going forward because I just want to be able to compare what, what's happened over, the trends that are going on over there.
Okay. Motion by?
Anyone can do whatever they want as a council. But I would ask that we would pull that out and table it at least for two weeks so we can get that report.
Any counsel, Nguyen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's, it's no harm to the contract at this moment. I do agree with attorney, with Counselor Gitchia that maybe we table this to get report and review those report and make decision thereafter.
Okay, Counselor by, motion by Counselor Gishia to take item 9.8 out of the vote, tonight's vote, take it out of the bundle, second by Counselor Robinson. This being out of order, Mr. Clerks, that need to be, this need to be roll call. Okay. So the, now we're going to need a motion to adopt all 11 vote. So we're not taking on 9.8. That would have been make 12. So we're going to vote on, on 11 vote tonight. A motion to adopt by Counselor Yem, second by Counselor Rook. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Before we?
For more, Counsel Leahy, I'll count the call.
Before that, Mr. Mayor, may I just make a quick comment on the 9.9? And I just want to commend the city because the owner have contacted me for three months ago, similar to the speaker previously about the, the house, the, the homeless that live on the properties. They left syringes and they deal drugs in, in open. So they want to protect their home and their family. So they asked the city, so I forwarded the information to the manager's office to allow them to put fence around their home, which is located at 387 and 397 Central Street. And that, like, tonight, they, they call and they want me to express the gratitude and thanks to the manager. and thanks to the manager and, and his team to, that providing the support to allow them to put the fence around their property. I appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Counsel Yum, Counsel Leahy, did you want to, did you have a comment earlier?
Sure, thank you. Through you to the manager. I just had a question on the Maury School funding. Is that the Maury School? Is that one of the SBA grants? No.
Mr. Manager?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the counsel. That is actually, that was put together by Representative Roddy Ma. That was a piece that came through on a budget amendment. So it's a, an earmark directly coming in from the representative.
Okay, so glad to get that. What do you, what are the expectations of getting that school? I don't know what the word is, but they've always had problems there. So what's the expectation? What do you think that money will do? And then how much more work will there be after this? To get the heating system, cooling system, controls, you know, running like it should have been when the school was built?
Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, through you. I may bring up the commissioner as well. But by the end of, we're hoping by the end of November, Commissioner, to bring all of the monies that have been, that have currently been spent in the past few months on all the school buildings when it comes to HVAC and whatnot. We're hoping to have that full report by the end of November. I don't want to put any pressure on the commissioner here, but to let everyone know what's going to be happening. But Commissioner, in regards to this particular school, is there something that you could share with, share with the counsel?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor and the counsel. In regards to Maury School, we, the, the funds were earmarked from Representative Ma. And these funds are being tied into the school building project that is ongoing at the Maury. And this is being identified into HVAC. And it's being tied, there's a contract being drawn up right now through the 25A agreement that we have that allows us to go right, go out, not go out to bid and just select the contractor that we want to continue to upgrade the HVAC at the Maury School. There's a lot of information that we're providing through Catherine Moses. We're doing a lot of work with MSBA project to get the heat back online up. We're also doing preventive maintenance in the boilers and doing PMs throughout on a lot of our heating pumps and everything at, at that school as well.
All right. It's just that, you know, I guess none of us, a lot of us weren't there when that school was built. So that was probably finished in '08, '09. It's 14 years old. It's had roof leaks, window leaks, the system never worked. I mean, really, you know, our expectations, it's just incredible how these schools don't function after they're built. And we keep paying for them as citizens, so. I hope the new high school doesn't do this. But I mean, that's one of the newest schools. It's never worked. We had issues with the stock closure. We went out and hired a professional project manager group. That didn't seem to, you know, do the trick either. And when we called, when Mayor, who was mayor at the time, Mayor Millinazzo called to get the name corrected on the front of the building, you know, they wouldn't even do that. We had to pay for it. And it was, they were supervising the, the job. So it's just, I don't know. I'm, I'm just very frustrated with the whole thing. So the amount of money we're putting into new schools is incredible. And it's got to stop sometime, so.
Mr. Manager?
That's all. I just hope after this project, we get that school up and running.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the counsel. With the amount of, counsel, with the amount of preventative maintenance that we're encountering, I think the commissioner, as well as the entire Lands and Buildings and DPW, we are checking those boxes, especially on the preventative maintenance. And the goal of this administration moving forward is we're playing a game of catch-up on preventative maintenance. But that's, you're right. At some point in time, we will be checking all those boxes. You know, preventative maintenance is the key to this. And I think that's what some of the, the issues are going to be for the future. Now, when I make the statement that hopefully by the end of November, we're at least going to be able to provide the counsel with the amount of contracts, the amount of money that is on the street currently at that, well, I should say at that point in time. This is not to say there will not be any issues throughout the, the school district or all, throughout the buildings. But this is the start of, I think, a, a new day when we start talking about preventative maintenance, ensuring that we get to the bottom of, of all of these, these pieces of equipment that are extremely valuable. So that we, we are hearing you loud and clear. And I think that the commissioner and Lands and Buildings and the folks over in DPW are doing a heck of a job bringing us back to where we actually should be.
No, I think they're doing a good job. It's just incredible that, again, this is one of the newest schools and we hired a project manager group and we're still pouring money into the school. Because it's, you know, I mean, where's the responsibility of these project managers that come into cities and towns and build these schools? And are supposed to look out for the good of the town of the city? And then 10, 14 years later, they're, they're off the hook. You know, the, these are the things that should, they should be responsible for 20 years of life of the loan of the building. But it's incredible. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Leahy, for bringing that up on, on the Maury School. And on the $150,000 funding, I, my last term, I worked closely with Ma's office to get that $150,000 towards the Maury School. It's not a lot, but hopefully, speaking with Commissioner Byrne, hopefully something will be done, at least with the HVAC anyway, for, for this part of the funding. And if there's anything else need to be done, hopefully the manager's office and DPW could put together something. As Counsel Leahy mentioned, it is, it is a fairly brand-new school. I think we had the motion to adopt and second already, is that right? Mr. Clerk?
Yes, it is.
Roll call, please.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Counsel Yum?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Getchier?
Yes.
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercier?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Eleven yeas.
We now go to line item 10, orders from the city manager. 10.1, order 60-day trial, way for reading, second reading by title. Mr. Clerk? City of Lowell, in the city council order pursuant to Chapter 266 of the Code of Ordinance of City of Lowell, Massachusetts, concerning section 266-6, they are entitled temporary experimental regulations. Temporary traffic regulations are hereby implemented for a period of up to 60 days. Any comments or questions by any of the counselors? Here none. Need a motion to adopt by Counsel Janess, second by Counsel Noon. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Counsel Yum?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Getchier?
Yes.
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercier?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Eleven yeas.
11 reports of subcommittee, 11.1, public. Okay, we jump around so much, I lost where we left off before. So we're not going to 11, we're going to where we left off before.
5.4.
I believe it was, is it, Mr. Clerk, the 5.4?
Yes.
Okay. So we now start by the 5.4. As we start before, these are the motions from the last meeting. 5.4 is Counsel Mercy, request neighborhood subcommittee have traveling subcommittee meetings within each section of the city to discuss issues of concern, starting in the Highland section.
Second.
Second by Counsel Noon. Counsel Mercy?
Yes, I'm not taking credit for this because I think in the past, people have taken their sub, their subcommittees on the road. And I'd like to do that with the neighborhood subcommittee. We have Counselor Eric Getchier and Counselor Wayne Janess. And I called them and asked them if they would object to this motion. And they both agreed that that would be great. So I think we'll start out in Nancy Judge's Highland neighborhood. And I'm hoping that this passed. I, I assumed that it would. So I did talk to Nancy Judge and her meeting, her monthly meeting was yesterday. So that's an effort and futility. So I have to wait till October 17th. So she has her meeting next month, on Monday, October 17th, at the Auditorium of Lowell Catholics. So if this motion passes, I would ask my colleagues and our city clerk. I, I called him as well and he didn't object to going out on the road. You know, if Carol Wack can do it, I don't know why we can't. But anyway, so we'll be meeting, if this passes, on Monday, October 17th, 7:00 PM. She had asked if we thought 7 o'clock would be too late. Would you want it for 6:30? So we'll discuss that. But that's the gist of the motion. I know there are many concerns in the Highlands. I did get calls from people in that neighborhood. That's why I'm starting there. And I could go on and on about some problems in, in the Highlands. So we'll just leave that for the subcommittee. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Counsel Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's, it's, it is a very good motion. I know that last term, Counsel Rourke took the subcommittee on the road. So, which is a, a good things to do, especially when you have the district, you know. So to do this is very nice. Thanks.
Thank you.
No other comments on favor, say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. 5.5, Counsel Noon, request city manager provide a report on programs funded with various federal block grants, CDBG, home, ESG, et cetera, for the last three fiscal years and evaluate alternative funding application strategies to more equitably disperse funding amongst Lowell nonprofit partners in the 2022-2023 Annual Action Plan. Second by Counsel Janess. Counsel Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's just a focus, you know, we just, we need to have a focus on what, what type of program we're going to be funding. I know that the city have funded many organizations and try to do as best as they can, you know, disperse this money. But just, just like to have a focus on it going forward. Thank you.
No other comments on favor, say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. Motion 5.6, Counsel Noon, request city manager report on efforts and future plans to ensure fairness, transparency, and equity included in the selection process and criteria for any prospective recreational marijuana dispensaries or delivery services and association host community agreements. HCA, second by Counsel Robinson. Counsel Noon?
I think Counsel Robinson spoke on this as the last subcommittee meeting. I don't remember what subcommittee. I think it was the Cannabis Control Subcommittee. Especially as we work on the, the host community agreement on the delivery. So we need to really put an emphasis on those, ensuring that those, the fairness, transparency, and equities in, in that level. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No other comments on favor, say no, the eyes have it, motions carry.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Mercy?
I just had a comment on this motion, and I don't have a problem with it. But we're not suggesting that there isn't fairness, are we? We're not doing that, are we?
We, we, I'm not saying that, Counsel Mercy, just that I'm looking at transparency of it as to who applying, whether or not they meet the criteria, the equity issues, you know, that are set forth by the, the Cannabis Commission from Boston. Thank you.
I thought you were suggesting there was unfairness. All right, thank you.
Counsel Robinson?
If I may, Counsel Mercy. One of the things that was identified when pretty much the state allowed the cannabis industry in, gave the green light with legalization, was a lot of the communities that were impacted as a result of the war on cannabis, when it became legal, those same communities who were disproportionately impacted never really got an opportunity to enter into that business because the requirements to get involved in that kind of occupation was so high. And, and the state has made significant strides to try to change some of those requirements to allow people that might have been impacted in the past to enter in a legal form of business within that occupation now. And so we're just trying to, when, when we look at it as a city, we want to make sure that we're following what the state is recommending is best practice to allow people that were kind of left out in the cold on the first wave of, of entry into this business having a fighting chance to get involved.
All right, I get it. Thank you.
Thank you.
No other comments. We'll now move to the next motion. 5.7, Counsel Getchier, request city manager work with the school administration on drawing districts to include equitability and diversification in order to provide neighborhood schooling, second by Counsel Drinkwater. Counsel Getchier?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. I believe since the 1980s, in the early 90s, this conversation hasn't really got off. And we need to really look back at every agreement that's been done through the years. And as we look, we're, we're watching a city that has grown with traffic. We've watched a city that has been, become more diverse. And, and many families, many parents have reached out and said, you know, we have a child either in Pawtucketville that we have to bring across the bridge and then bring back. Or you have one in the Highlands that has to go across the bridges or vice versa, across the city early in the morning and then during mid-afternoon traffic. And we also, we're watching as equity and diversity has been drawn up in districts. For the council that sit here, I think that, you know, we should look at that for also our students and, and give them more time for learning rather than travel. And right now, there, there's a lot of issues with getting busing. So a lot of kids are waiting and waiting and buses don't come and parents have to drive. And, you know, we're having many issues just fulfilling the need of busing. So this agreement was done over 30 years ago. And, and I just think that after 30 years, this could be revisited. And hopefully, our city manager and the law department can start the conversation, revisit this issue, and see if there is a way that we can draw up districts that actually can do the same thing, but also give the students and the families more quality time at home and, and closer to their neighborhoods. So that now the two families that live next door to each other are not sending their children to different schools and they, they don't really get to know each other. So I, I just think that hopefully it starts a conversation that can make a difference in, in the learning environment and give students more time at home to do homework and, and cut down on our traffic throughout the city. Thank you.
Counsel Robinson?
I just would like to comment and thank Counsel Getchier for bringing this forward. I think it's a great motion. I think it's a long overdue conversation to start. And we hear quite often about community and equity and, and all these things. Well, I attended neighborhood schools in the city growing up, and you knew your community. You went to school with the kids from the neighborhood. I think if there's a way we can work to get back to that place, I think this is a great start. And thank you, Counsel Getchier, for bringing this forward.
Counsel Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This conversation has been going on for many, many years. I think the vast majority of people are in favor of neighborhood schools, but there's a lot of things that play into that, the desegregation order, availability of space within the districts. There was talk that they'd have to build another school in, I believe, Pawtucketville before they could ever do this. So this is something, like I said, that's been discussed for years. Whether or not it meets the desegregation order. And I don't know whether or not it's something that could be referred to the solicitor for, for input on. I also don't know if this is really under the purview of the city council versus the school committee. So if she could please comment on that. Thank you.
Through Mr. Manager to Madam Solicitor.
Thank you. I think this is something that, that would be more into the jurisdiction of the school committee. The, and again, this is sort of another one of these issues that, on the surface, may look like an easy fix. However, even to, to, to take another look at the consent decree, what we would need to have in place is really to hire somebody to do a really detailed study, demographic study of, of the city. Those studies generally take a couple of years. It's not to say that if we don't start it, it never gets, it never gets changed. But, but we can certainly work with the manager and the superintendent and see what options are available. and see what options are available, and maybe, maybe kick off a study of that, of that nature.
So can we make a motion, move forward with beginning a study on the desegreg, on neighborhood schools?
It would be going out to hire somebody that could adequately do a demographics study.
Counsel, Mr. Manager?
Just through you, Mr. Mayor, to the council, actually, to the law department, just making sure, would we have the sole authority to do that, or would we have to get buy-in from the school committee?
It should be done in conjunction with the, with the school department.
Counselor Scott, are you all set?
I'm all set. So if we could move forward with that discussion, I don't know if we can refer this to a subcommittee, maybe for a joint subcommittee with the school committee, to have a discussion about making a plan. I don't know if that would be something you'd be amenable to.
Just, just for clarification, Counselor Scott, are you asking the, make of the motion to refer this to a subcommittee, to?
A joint subcommittee with the school department.
Counsel Gishia?
Just on the statement that we've been waiting and waiting for 10 years for someone to take the steps that the solicitor is actually saying. So now is the time to do it, and we understand that it's years out, and it takes a lot of planning. But I would ask that the solicitor would reach out to the school department and try to get that conversation started before we go into subcommittees, because I just think that this is an administrative function that should be done at the administrative level from both sides and not at our level. And then they should come back to us with where we're moving going forward, because we can sit in a subcommittee for a very long time when we have a solicitor here who can actually start the conversation, go back and forth, and has the background to actually perform it in a way that it can get done quicker than going to the subcommittees. I don't disagree with Counselor Scott that we need that discussion, but I think the experts are in the law department and in the manager's office that can actually get over to the school department and start these things. If we would have started 10 years ago, I think we would have helped out students in the learning process and gave them more time to be at home and learn in their neighborhoods and try to do that. And of course, it all depends on the outline of the districts, like the solicitor's outlined. And I think that's important that we get that started, and we see, if there's an issue in between, then bring it to a subcommittee, no problem. But I think at this point, it should go through the solicitor and the city manager to get that conversation started. We're spending a lot of time in buses, CO2 emissions. There are a lot of things that are going on across these bridges that maybe we could cut down on. And I just would hope that we could use the manager and the city solicitor to get that conversation started.
Is that okay by you, Counsel Scott? Maybe wait for the report and then refer to the subcommittee if that's agreeable.
Absolutely. I mean, I certainly agree with moving the discussion forward in some way, shape. It's been going on, like I said, the conversation for 10 years. I just think that we have to go about it the right way and include the school committee in the discussion. So, thank you.
Sure. Counsel Drinkwater and then Counselor Rourke. Counsel Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, you know, I'm all for moving forward to gather more information on this topic. I think we need to be very careful and deliberative about the process, and what I'm hearing is that we will be. I think it's important that the way the motion is worded, it references districts, because I think oftentimes this topic gets reduced down to, you know, are we going to keep things the way that we are? Are we just going to go to, you know, you attend your neighborhood school. And essentially, you, you know, your school draws from the neighborhood surrounding. And I think if we did it that way, without some kind of district system, what you would see is that maybe not every school, but at least a handful of schools in Lowell would become less diverse if we had a strictly neighborhood school system. And I think that would be a real problem. They might not look like they did 20, 30 years ago, but I think it's a real problem if any of our schools through a new system become less diverse than they are today. So, you know, right now, we essentially do have a district system, a zone system. Maybe there's a way we can do that, that would maintain levels of diversity throughout our schools, but would be more efficient transportation-wise, and maybe, you know, allow families to more often get the school of their choice. But I think we just have to be very, very careful here by not going backwards in terms of the progress that we have made and making sure that, you know, all of our schools throughout the city are diverse. So, again, I'm somewhat agnostic on the process for how we move forward and gather the information, you know, how we get the report. But, you know, look forward to getting the information and considering at that point. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Rourke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And getting back to the manager's question earlier, does the city council trump this, you know, does it have to go to the school committee for approval first before we can start the process? If so, then, you know, obviously, we'd have the mayor bring this motion to the school committee for approval first. Or is it a situation such as the high school location where all the council and the school committee together voted as one to decide on how we go about the future of it?
Madam Solicitor?
I think, again, it would be, it would be more under the jurisdiction of the, of the school committee. However, if the council wants the manager's office and the law department to start that conversation.
So I guess the question would be, is if the school committee votes this and they say no, does the city council, again, do we have any, you know, is it, is it the same? Or, you know, when start the process, if they say, if the school committee votes 7-0 no, not to do it, you know, what do we have as a council to go forward?
Yeah. I mean, there's the issue as to whether there would be any, any next steps that the council could take. But I think if the school committee wasn't committed to doing it, it would be virtually impossible to carry out.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none on favor, say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. Now go to 5.8, Counselor Janess requests city manager have proper department begin a pilot program of dog waste dispensers in areas where pet waste has become a persistent problem, second by Counsel Musia. Counselor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the manager, excuse me. This is something that came out of a discussion, as I understand, between you and one of your former colleagues who happens to be one of my neighbors. So she asked me to file this motion and start this process forward. She's noticed on many of her morning walks with her dogs that there are quite a few places that have become kind of hotspots, and don't know if it's because people are lazy, because they don't have bags, whatever it is. But, you know, putting dog waste dispensers out would, or dog waste bag dispensers would take away one of the excuses and possibly help to address this. And I guess they're not that much money. So I leave this in your capable hands. Thank you.
No other comments on favor, say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. 5.9, Counselor Janess requests city manager provide the council with an update on the parking study from 2020 and progress on the implementation of the recommendations, second by Counselor Yem. Counselor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The parking study came up a couple meetings ago. We were talking about it. I think it was actually 2021, not 2020, but, you know, pandemic time. I'm not sure exactly when that was. But I just thought it was good to kind of bring this up again and get some fresh eyes on it now that there's been quite a bit of turnover with the administration, both at the DPD level and at the manager level. There were some good thoughts in there. There was a lot of, you know, ideas about going one way or the other. So I thought it'd be a good idea to put some fresh eyes on it and take another look at it. Thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none on favor, say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. Motion 5.10, Counselor Janess requests city manager have proper department evaluate adding crossing lights at the Shattuck-Merrimack intersection across Merrimack, similar to the lights on East Merrimack by Middlesex College or on Broadway near Market Basket, second by Counselor Scott. Counselor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city manager. This was brought to me by a different dog-owning neighbor who's noticed, who's had trouble crossing Merrimack Street to get to Lucy Larkin Park from Shattuck Street. There's a crosswalk there in front of Old City Hall Enterprise Bank, but drivers don't stop. So she was wondering if it might be possible to add those motion-detecting lights that exist, the flashing yellow lights that exist either over by Merrimack College, further up Merrimack Street, or like the ones on Broadway by Market Basket where you push the button and they're solar powered. So hope this is something we can do. Thank you.
Any comments or questions on that item? Hearing none on favor, say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. 5.11, Counselor Janess, Counselor Rourke, request city manager have proper department explore beginning and open streets program in the downtown area similar to the, what other, similar to what other cities have done. Counselor Janess or Counselor Rourke, who wants to go first?
Districts.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yep, this was something that Counselor Rourke brought to me. I think it's a great idea. You see other cities such as Boston doing this with Newbury Street every Sunday. I think there's an opportunity here to really kind of dial up the activities in the, in the life of the downtown on the weekends, particularly, you know, during the summer. Things can be a little sleepy on some of the weekends. So we thought it'd be a good idea to start the ball rolling on this and try to, try to move forward with having, having some time when we can close the streets off and, you know, to traffic and have everybody get out and have a good time. Personally, I was thinking the last Sunday of every month in the summer might be a good time to shut down Merrimack Street from, say, Kirk Street down to Carney Square, you know, maybe have some bigger events then. We already have Folk Fest on one of those Sundays, so it wouldn't add a whole lot. But it might be a good opportunity to really drive some business for all the businesses down there and let folks have a good time. And we can look at doing other streets, too, if maybe that doesn't work for whatever reason. You know, we've got Market Street, we've got Middle Street, and we've got Palmer Street. So there's options, and I think it's a good opportunity here, and I'd like to see what we can do with it. Thank you.
Counsel Rourke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, talking to Counselor Janess, I think the downtown is actually ripe for this type of activity. You know, whether it be the start of fall or the start of the holiday season, I know there's always a big push to shop local during the holiday season in the city as well. You know, if there's something that can be done on Saturdays and Sundays, I think it would be very beneficial. I know that the manager's office has been looking into music as well, and, you know, with the change of the seasons and, you know, we're in the good period of weather now, where it's not too hot, it's not too cold. I think a lot of activities can be done downtown with different themes and so forth. So I think, you know, Nashua does it. Boston is doing it now. I think Havrel has done it, too. And that's, you know, just like Counselor Janess said, they closed down some streets, notify the businesses, and, you know, redirect people to those areas. So I think it has a chance really to be beneficial to the city, and hopefully we can get something done. I know it's, you know, middle of September, but if we get, you know, end of October maybe, and again, starting with the holiday season right afterwards, I think would really help the city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Robinson?
Thank you. I'd just like to speak fully supportive of an idea like this. It's been kicked around for quite some time. I thank both councils for bringing this forward. And let's not forget, middle in, middle in Palmer Street there, we have a great new venue with that Derby Park with the mural. I think that's how you start getting people in to the areas that we haven't utilized in the past. So, thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none on favor, say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. Motion 5.12, Counselor Janess, Counselor Yem, request city manager have proper department investigate traffic calming measures and safety improvements for the Dunn-Broadway intersection. Counselor Janess or Counselor Yem, who wants to go first? Counselor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the manager. This is the intersection that we know, that the same apartment has had a SUV come through the living room window twice in the past six months. So it's clear that there's a need here to, to address this. I would say that about any intersection where we have people crashing into someone's home on a regular basis, and this seems to be getting there. Two of the four corners at this intersection have some protective bollards around the crosswalk. I don't know if that's something we can expand to the other two corners as well temporarily. I don't know if it's possible to maybe put some Jersey barriers up to keep folks from crashing into this same apartment again until we do something more permanent. But I just want to, want to see us address it before, you know, the worst happens. Thank you.
All set, you, all set, Mr. Mayor?
No other comments on favor, say no, the eyes have it, motion is carry. Now go to motion 5.13, Counselor Scott, Counselor Gishia, request city manager have the appropriate department provide a legal opinion on the possibility of terminating the waste contract for nonperformance. In addition, provide the council with all documentations of fines that have been issued for nonperformance to date. Counselor Scott or Counselor Gishia, who wants to go first? Counselor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This motion was made after hearing repeated complaints about trash collection not being picked up. I wanted to find out how many fines we've issued, how many fines Waste Management has actually paid. I will say, I did meet with the neighborhood group last evening, that they do think that there has been some improvement, which is a good thing. And I don't know what that, you know, to contribute that to. I don't know whether or not there's been discussions between your office and Waste Management. There are still concerns right now about waste, yard waste not being picked up, and if that's going to be an issue going forward. So if you could just provide a report, I know Counselor Noonan had made a motion about smaller districts. Maybe that's something we could look at. But this is just an ongoing issue, and I think we're all just really overwhelmed by the number of people that were concerned about it. Thank you.
Counsel Gishia?
I echo Counselor Scott's sentiments, but, you know, accountability in contracts is important. And we're coming into the fall season, and we're coming in to watch yard waste. And everybody here has seen, and I've spoken to other councils who said their own home, the yard waste has sat there for three and four weeks. And so I just, for me, accountability is important in contracts. We all sign them, and we're all in agreement that we're going to do certain, meet certain terms of each contract. And this contract, prior to Commissioner Byrne coming on, was really much tougher to deal with. Since Commissioner Byrne has come on, I think that some things have gotten much, much better. He has much communication to, the Waste Management Group has been fabulous from Commissioner Byrne. Anytime you call over there and there's an issue, it's usually taken care of in 24 hours. But I think that, you know, should we have to call Commissioner Byrne is the question. Should a resident really have to reach out to us, and then we have to ask those questions when you're paying good money, and they're fining us every time that, you know, a recyclable is contaminated, we get fined, and the tip and fees are up. But the last thing that any government agency wants to do is terminate a contract, because it usually costs you a lot more when you do that. And I want all the residents to understand that. And publicly, I want to work with this group. I want to make sure that we have, we have a service that meets the requirements for the residents. That's all we all want. That's why we have management teams that sign contracts like this. And I do believe that, I know Commissioner Byrne won't be here forever, but I think under his leadership, we've seen that, you know, an improvement, as Counselor Scott had said. My concern is not so much when Commissioner Byrne is here. My concern was prior to Commissioner Byrne and post-Commissioner Byrne. And that's really the concern, because they did not respond to us. We sat here, and they went on a screen and Zoom and said, look, we don't have the drivers to meet the needs. You know, they've met their hours. We can't pick this up. But all of a sudden, now we can do these things. And that, that concern is coming straight for us this fall. And the questionable thing for me is there's less trees in this city, there's less yard waste in this city, but yet we're getting worse service in this city when it comes to that area. So this motion for me is to put somebody on notice that we need to start documenting issues. We need to start putting people on notice and saying, if it's not done, then when it comes bid time, and you do bid, you will be discounted for that bid, because we're not going to sit here and go through this over and over again with all our phones. But the alternative is, it's going to cost you more money if we can't resolve this. So that really was my thought on this, and I've listened to the Highlands Neighborhood speak to us about trash not being picked up. And I commend the manager and his staff, but more so Commissioner Byrne for his hard work and his connection over there to try to get things done. I think that's the way that government used to work. But we have a new government, and it doesn't work as efficient as what Commissioner Byrne is trying to teach others to do. So going forward, I look forward to seeing the report on how many times this company has been fined over this contract, and what documentation we have in a file that says we didn't meet the needs on these dates and that date. I thank you for that.
Counsel Noonan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I echo what Counselor Gishia, as well as Counselor Scott's sentiment on this. We were yesterday- We were yesterday, last night, with, at the Highland Neighborhood, Councilor Gitchia and I, the subject of trash and yard waste collection came up. Not so much recently, but the past. The past has been not a month, the past has been almost a whole, that whole years. A lot of excuse was made, why was not picked up, this and that. I think Waste Management is too big. I was, you know, like I said before, my motions and my requests before is that this contract with Waste Management come to a term 2024. We need to maybe look into, break it up into small, smaller company. Opportunity now, we should not wait until closer to 2024. We should start looking now, and no one now know better about Waste Management and trash collection and yard waste and all that than Gunther. Gunther back at DPW in a different capacity, but you still can, you know, seek his expertise in this and how we go about doing this. I think maybe start breaking down into, break it into smaller, and if we still want to continue with Waste Management, some of them, that's fine. So I would suggest that we look at the expertise that we have in Gunther and to see maybe a possibility, an opportunity now, is a good opportunity to break it down into a smaller company. Thank you.
Councilor Rourke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, to bring the motion forward and to talk about it is good. I'm hesitant as a councilor to get involved in contract talks. That is a purview of the manager's office and not really belong in front of a council. But I will say, you know, in agreement with Councilor Gitchia and Councilor Scott, it has improved, and I think a lot of that has to do with Commissioner Byrne coming aboard and really put a lot of his time and his energy towards timely pickups. I know in Petecaville, we've been fortunate to be on time over the past number of weeks, and hopefully that continues. The yard waste does seem to be the only problem that's left as far as the performance of Waste Management. You know, the report of fines and whatnot is probably just, but again, just not comfortable putting contracts into a motion from a city council. Thank you.
And Councilor Leahy?
Thank you. I'll be brief. I just wanted to add the same thing. You know, we're going through, we're still finishing up a pandemic. I think the city has been doing a great job managing this. Nothing's perfect. We've all been out there. Restaurants can't get help, stores can't get help, there's no bus drivers, there's no teachers, no substitute. So I'm not going to support the motion. I think, you know, the intent is good, but I think let the manager handle this. I think the departments have been doing a good job, and for the most part, companies are doing what they can. So I just think we should leave this in the hands of the manager and not the council. Thank you.
Council Robinson?
Thank you. Again, we've had ups and downs. I can speak for my district, and I hear, you know, pandemic, companies are struggling with staffing. That's fine, but do we get a rebate because they're struggling with staffing? I mean, we're still expected to pay our share. Trash, I'm thankful for, you know, inspectional services, the administration, the commissioner, because there's been plenty of times where I've had to call from constituents saying they missed entire streets in Centerville. And then we get a call back saying, "Well, they're looking for specific addresses." Because it's, again, they're nowhere near holding up their end of the bargain, and they can try to say whatever. Other districts, it's a different story. I don't know if they think because lower Centerville is not as much green space, we don't have yard waste. I've had yard waste barrels sitting in front of my house for four weeks, full of rain, stinking, no problems. It'll be heavier when they come to pick it up. But we haven't even begun, I mean, the grass has been burnt out for months, a month and a half. What's going to happen in a month from now when leaves are falling? And then, on one hand, we're telling our residents, especially where I am, where it's densely populated, "Please, cut your grass, weed whack, rig up the leaves, do all the things you can to try to spruce up and give curb appeal to these densely populated neighborhoods." So they do it. They put their lawn bags out there. Guess what? The lawn bags sit out there for two, three, four weeks at a time. It rains, they fall apart. Those homeowners get disgusted, and we haven't even begun fall season. I can only imagine what's going to happen with that. Are we going to get more, well, because of the pandemic, or because we're short-staffed? Enough's enough. I mean, if the city doesn't hold up their end of the bargain on services that our residents expect, we can't turn around and tell them, "Well, I'm sorry, but the pandemic and we're short-staffed." People demand services, and this is a private company that we're paying a premium for this service. So I think by all means necessary. There's no way to operate yard waste, trash, recycling pickups as if you know the right person, they respond, you're putting out small fires. These are all symptoms of the disease. And so far, the disease in this equation has been the service that we're paying for. Thank you.
Councilor Gitchia?
I just want to respond to one comment that was made. Companies are struggling. I truly don't care. When it comes down to people taking care of their property and putting it out there, I had an 89-year-old woman drag it out for three weeks where I had to call the commissioner because the area wasn't being picked up, and he sent the night watchman to do it. So it gets old to listen to the same excuses on every single contract. And at some point, we pay good money, as Council Robinson said, we pay you the money, we don't see any discount because the services are less than what's expected in a contract. And it's written right in the contract. And what the question comes down to, and I do agree with Councilor Rourke, it's probably not the purview of the council. But as you look at some of these motions, they're about attention-getters to companies saying, you know what? The bosses are tired of taking phone calls on something that the city had as a service at one time and had no problem picking up. In the rain, in the snow, in the sleet, they did not cancel days for them to go to work. And it comes down to when you sign a contract, hold up your end. And I promise you that there were plenty of tipping fees and fines that were levied against this city for recyclables that were contaminated because they didn't pick up the trash on the days they should have. So residents said, "I'm going to use that green barrel because I have nowhere else to put it." And I just think it's unfair to the residents to pay for contracts and services to be done and giving a little barrel to put it within and add days to the service. And I'll just leave it at that.
Councilor Rourke?
I know it's probably a little bit early, Mr. Mayor, but I know Commissioner Byrne is here. Is there any update on conversation with Waste Management of how it's going, how they're responding to? I know I've talked to the assistant city manager, shot him many times, he's spending half his day on the phone with Waste Management. Is there any update you can give the council currently, or do you rather just wait for a report?
Through Mr. Manager to Commissioner?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, Council. There will be a report coming in the next two weeks. But the updates that we have, we, I talk to them on a daily basis, but we meet once a week on a Zoom call with myself and the management team and their team as well. We're making some headway with them as far as making sure that they're positioned to have more trucks on the road, making sure that they're getting areas on yard waste. They have had new employees, I'm not going to make excuses for them. They had some issues there. They were trying to get more drivers because of CDL drivers, and because of their equipment size and their training process, they've been backlogged on some things. However, as far as trash and recycling, I think they've met their goal. There will be a report that will forward you, and you'll see that in the next few weeks. As far as yard waste, I'm not going to stand here and disagree with you. I think that that's been a problem. No one has been dealing with it more so than my staff and people on my staff that we're trying to get our arms around it. But they are meeting some requirements. In our contract, the way the contract's written, they have up to 48 hours to fulfill their obligation. And I think that in some cases, they have fulfilled their obligation. I'm not going to sit here and say, and they've been 100% on top of it. But that's the contract that we have to play with. That's the way it was written, that's how it was signed. I wasn't privy to that contract, nor was this management team privy to that contract. I don't know how many councilors were on the team when this contract was done, but they do have rights to pick up the trash, whether it's yard waste, recycling or yard waste. They have our regular MSW. They have 48 hours if they miss a stop. So there, you know, previously, I guess maybe within a year ago, based on fines that I'm understanding, they were missing it by weeks at a time, I guess, and they were fined. And since I've been here, I mean, correct me if, and you mentioned that, Councilor, and Council Robinson, I'm shocked that it's out there for four weeks, and I just can't believe that we haven't been notified on that, and I trust what you're saying, and I'm not going to sit here and not. So you know what? I apologize that happened, and if that could come towards me, I'll make sure that that doesn't happen. And I've talked to many of the councilors here, by email or the proper channel through the manager's office, and we've kind of responded to what the best we can to help you out. And I think that the team that we've put together here with the direction from the council and the management team, I think that we're starting to move in the right direction with Waste Management. I don't know what they did in the past. I trust what you people are saying, but we're going to do everything to try to make it correct. We're going to try to make everything assured that the residents get their trash and their recycling and the yard waste picked up in the appropriate time.
Any other comments or questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, thank you, Commissioner Byrne, for doing it. And, you know, again, I look forward to the report that Commissioner Byrne is going to, you know, get to the council over the next few weeks, and hopefully there's some things, some options in there to increase the yard waste pickups. Thank you.
Any other comments? Here none. If I could just make a quick comment from up here, if there's no objection. I like the motion as explained by the makers of the motion, which is to hold the company accountable, but I do not like the insinuation of moving this towards a termination of the contract because that's really outside the purview of the council. And once you have something like that come on board, it's going to just keep on going where it's really our obligation. And I thank Commissioner Byrne for coming to speak on this, that you said they're going to plan to come make a presentation to the council in a couple of weeks. Is that true, or?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I didn't hear that.
Did you mention that they were planning to make a presentation or report on their progress soon, or was that going to be your report? Mr. Manager?
I'm going to look to me. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through to the council. That's something that we requested. We're either going to have them come and speak to us or have a report ready, and the report seems to be on my desk, and it was a reasonable report that we could, will have ready in the next two weeks.
Okay. Right, I think given that, you know, I think it'd be difficult for us to hold somebody, you know, hold their feet to the fire because we had other contracts with, you know, with bigger project that where the manager didn't do a good job, we had them come to make a report, and things work out. So I think before we move forward with this motion, I've got to ask the maker of the motion, maybe wait for them to make a presentation first and then move forward with the motion. Councilor Gitchia?
Well, I just want to clarify what the motion actually says versus what the opinions of others are saying. It says, "Request the city manager have the appropriate department provide a legal opinion." It doesn't say anything other than a legal opinion. So it doesn't say that we're terminating anything, it says provide a legal opinion on it. So that's what the motion is. It doesn't say anything that some people are trying to insinuate. What it's saying is provide a legal opinion on it of terminating a waste contract for nonperformance. How do we go about that? So that's what we're asking. We're not asking to terminate anybody, we're asking for a legal opinion on how and to get documentation towards something. How is that provided by the city? So that's what the question is from the motion. So I don't know where anyone's saying someone's getting terminated. What it's saying is how does, how do we go about that? So the question is, to the solicitor, what documentation is needed? Is that a gray area? Is there other things that need to be provided? How much documentation do we have? Because those are the complaints we're getting. So we're not saying that the council has the power to terminate anything. I just want to clarify that.
Sure, thank you for the clarification. Any other comments or questions on this matter? Given that we have different opinion on this motion, I'm going to ask for a roll call. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
What's the question? Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Counsel Yem?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
No.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Gitchia?
Yes.
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
No.
Counsel Mercier?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Nanyes?
About four minutes before we reach the 10 o'clock mark, we have time for a couple more motions. Motion 5.14, Councilor Scott, request city manager have appropriate department work to update the bus huts around city, second by Councilor Janess. Councilor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll keep it really brief. Many of the bus huts in my area at least, and I haven't looked all over the city, are overgrown or they're missing the plexiglass so that there's really no protection from the rain for people that are, you know, that have to use them for transportation. So if we could look into some type of schedule of fixing them. Thank you.
Any other, Council Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to thank Councilor Scott for making this motion while you're around downtown. I had similar thoughts looking at some of the bus stops downtown, so I definitely think this is needed and look forward to getting this addressed. Thank you.
Council Robinson?
On the report that we got back in regards to the RFI on potential marketing with the garages and they identified a couple of the things, I forget, were the bus stops potentially included in that list of potential opportunities? Because if not, I mean, I've seen in other communities where they have bus stops that are updated and offer some kind of advertising space as well, so.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. Council, I don't believe that was there. I read that earlier today, but that's a good addition as far as that goes. We read that earlier and had a discussion, but maybe that's something we can add to that.
Thank you.
No other comments? On favor, say no, the I have it, motions carry. We have a couple of minutes. Motion 5.15, Council Scott, request city manager have the appropriate department work to add a crosswalk on Woburn Street by Eastern Street or in the vicinity, second by Council Robinson. Council Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Woburn Street is obviously a very busy road. There's one crosswalk at the Duchamp Playground. The next crosswalk is not until the Four Corners at Morton Street, Lawrence and Morton, so there's nothing in between. So a lot of people cross the Gulf Gas Station, and I've had residents reach out to me and ask me about having a crosswalk there. Thank you.
Any other comments? Here none. On the favor, say no, the I have it, motions carry. We are approaching at 10 o'clock and we have some...
Mr. Mayor?
Council Rourke?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to refer all the remaining motions to the manager's office and to accept the motion responses.
Motion by Council Rourke, second by Council Mercier. Do we have a roll call for this? Mr. Clerk?
All motions to the manager's office.
Okay. On the favor, say no, the I have it.
At least one of the motion responses I would like to refer to a subcommittee. Can we do that?
Can we do that if we just accept everything, or is there?
Absolutely.
Motion response N, the LRTA motion, I'd like to refer that to the Transportation Subcommittee, please.
What's the motion now? Because I, no.
No.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Gitchia?
Could I make a motion that all remaining items on the council agenda be, we meet on September 20th to take up that next Tuesday where we have that off? Could I make a motion that we actually meet on next Tuesday to take up the remaining items on this agenda?
Can we still not take up motion? Mr. Clerk? Another motion to take, to meet on what day?
Mr. Mayor, if we just voted to stop the meeting?
Yeah, we just stopped.
Can't get any more motions?
Yeah, there's no more motion.
Should have been done before 10 o'clock call.
Okay, we did the roll call. Any announcement after the fact?
Mr. Mayor, the meeting's over. Can't go back to 10 o'clock, meeting's over.
Mr. Mayor, we didn't even have an opportunity to discuss it, and it never looked up for us to, we were raising our hand to be recognized, so.
We did do the roll call. Motion adjourned by Counselor Yem?
Just a quick comment, Mr. Mayor, I just...
Do we need to do the motion to adjourn? Okay. Motion to adjourn by Counselor Yem, second by Counselor Rourke. On favors, I post say no, the I have it. Motion's carry. Meeting over.
Just say happy early birthday to Counselor Scott, that's all I want to say.
And happy anniversary to Wayne Janest and his bride. They've been married eight years today. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.